In your internet pump?
Yeah, believe me, I'm at the end of a hub and it's a very fragile location.
Oh, quit bragging, being up on top of the world, okay?
Yeah, Carrie, my money's on pilot error, I'm just saying.
Oh, that's the, that's the other side.
Yeah.
So we're still, oh, there we are. Mike, can you hear us? I can. Okay.
Welcome, Mike.
Well, we're all here. Let's call the meeting to order. Anthony, could you please do the roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Weest.
Hi.
Widmer.
Yep.
Here.
Lempress.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
I'm here.
And Mayor DeGolio.
Yes.
Can we see, can we see Robert's background again, please? It looks like he's in a fighter pipe.
He's a.
He's a.
That's because he's making two presentations.
I hope, I hope his presentations go as fast as.
He's on the moon.
The ICANN, remember the ICANN?
This is, this is the Maverick.
Okay.
Top gun.
I think he's more like Goose.
Do we have any public comment?
I have no public comments.
And no one on the phone wishes to make a public comment?
No hands raised.
Okay, let's move on to the ratification, the emergency services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have the written staff report. Not much has changed other than, or not much has changed since Monday. Let me correct that. Monday was a modification to the county's order, which allowed the resumption of landscaping and construction activity, as well as extended the order through the month of May. So all that this certification of the rules and regulations does is authorize landscaping and construction, and extends all of the items that were originally supposed to stop at the end of April, extends them through the month of May.
Okay, and there's a fairly extensive report in the staff report. Does anyone have any questions?
To the mayor, I do.
Please.
So remind me once again, and I see then Councilmember Widmer would like to also have a question. Remind me once again about the new rules for the being outside. Wearing face masks required for if you're going out walking your dog, or running around the block, or going into stores. But throughout San Mateo County, face masks are going to be required, correct?
Face masks are required if you're performing any essential activity, but if you are just exercising, you are encouraged to wear a face mask and also encouraged to have one with you, just in case you encounter somebody else within a six-foot radius.
I see. I had someone come up to me and say, you know, I'm really sick and tired of wearing this face mask all the time. What about CO2 poisoning?
It's not gonna happen.
Constantly breathing, so that was my question, Mayor.
Just to be clear, the answer to that is no, a mask is not required for walking around.
Okay.
Not for walking, which is considered exercise, but if you're going to a store.
Right, I was just trying to answer the question as asked. I think, because I thought, I thought George answered it sort of sort of correctly. I just wanted to make sure that the answer is not required. Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember.
If I can, Mayor, if I can just, if I can read the language of the order, it says, "When people need to leave their place of residence for the limited purposes allowed in this order, they must strictly comply with social distancing requirements as defined in Section 16K of the order, except as provided, and must wear face coverings as provided in the health officer order, including in connection with accessing or working for an outdoor business."
That's not consistent with what George has said about personal exercise or going for a walk.
And it's not consistent with what Scott Morrow said on the call today.
Well, there's an exception that Mona didn't address that deals with a variety of exercises.
Yeah.
So, 16K, I'm gonna bring that up, and young children also are exempted from having to wear face coverings. So the exemption to that general rule states that face coverings are not, excuse me. Well, it actually says that when you don't have a face covering, you can wear, I believe that you do have to wear a face covering.
I do too. I honestly do too.
I, I don't. I don't. And, and the health officer has repeatedly said, if you're outside, even just walking, maintain the social distance. However, if you have to go across, for example, a pedestrian bridge, where there's not a chance for you to do the social distancing, then you must have a face covering on. Other than that, if you can maintain the face, the social distance, you do not need to have a face cover on. That is from the health officer of San Mateo County.
Okay, so what about, I'll just give you an example. What about if we are, let's see. What about if you're running and someone is running towards you, and they do not cross over to the other side of the street, and you are running in the correct path? You know, and they don't.
That's why, that's why if you're out running, biking, or walking, the order encourages you to take a face mask with you. It encourages you to wear it.
Right.
So, so the language, as I recall it, was encourages, but doesn't require, and encourages you to take it.
And Elizabeth, the situation you're describing, I think, is the one that generates the most comments, which are.
Yeah.
Joggers. My experience is that 90-plus percent of the people walking around town are not wearing face masks when they're just going for a walk.
Yeah.
And that typically people cross the street, you know, 100 yards away from you, so you're not really very close to each other. Except for joggers who, for whatever reason, just want to keep going straight. They don't want to zigzag around. And, and that's generated a lot of issues, I know, in other places.
Well, it makes me, so, running, I understand, with a face mask on is painful, inhaling. But if you have it with you, or at least pulled down, and then you come in front of someone, or you're coming up past someone that you're gonna pass, you could pull it up for that period of time, so that you're not huffing and puffing and blowing out, you know, hot air and, you know, droplets. I think that would be, it should be clarified a little bit.
Right.
Yeah, that, and that's what he, he said, you know, you have like a neckerchief around your, your neck, and then when you're going near somebody and you can't avoid, you just pull it up, and then as soon as you're past, you can put it back down. Because it's recognized that exercising and breathing through a face mask is very, very painful, let's say.
It's a little.
Okay.
Thank you.
That answered your question. Bill, did you have a question? You have your hand raised.
Oh, do I?
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that.
No problem.
I have a question, if I could.
Please.
Which is simply, have we announced as a county what criteria we're gonna use as we look to open up? Are we gonna follow the White House guidelines, or what do we?
Yeah.
What are we doing?
So, Bill could comment also. He commented on that today. Boros spoke on the elected's call today, and he specifically said that the intent is to follow the state mandate, but not with respect to the timing. That we will set our own timing, and it will be slower than the state. And he wasn't specific in terms of, but, but in terms of opening up in general, he stated that it will be a week or two slower. I thought it was, well, I interpreted his comments.
But, but no criteria, no specific quantitative?
Did you get that, Bill? He did say what the key things were that he was looking at.
Yeah, I mean, you know, for him to go real loose, he ended up, he wants so many tests, 200 tests for, what, 100,000 people? And so that meant they're, they were being able to test over 1,000 a day. You know, and he wanted to see things declining, that type of stuff. So, he does have his criteria. He is taking counsel from the other health officers in the other, the other counties that are adjoining the Bay Area. But he did, he emphasized that the state may be moving faster than he is comfortable in moving. He is concerned in, and about the second wave, and they are having a hard time deciding what model to follow. And, you know, I guess somebody brought up also on the call that, I guess there's a discussion that in Italy, there's a second disease, a similar disease, but it's mutated. And he was going to investigate that, but he had not had a chance to, but he was concerned about that as well.
Does this one person have the ability to make the decision? Unelected person has the ability to make decisions, everybody, or is it, is the, are the county supervisors making it? Who, who are making the decisions?
He advises the county, the county supervisors.
I think he makes it. George, do you know the answer to that?
He makes it. I thought he was an elected position.
No, he's not elected.
He's appointed by the board.
Absolutely appointed, but I think that he has the sole discretion to make the decision.
As a health officer, yeah.
Although San Mateo County has agreed to work in harmony with the other five counties. So there are a few places where the counties can go off on their own. And he said something today about how we were gonna be different than the other counties, Bill. It wasn't a particularly important item, so I didn't focus on it.
Yeah, no, he, he's, he's gonna make the decision that he feels based on our hospital beds that are available and, and things like that. We obviously have enough PPE now from.
That's the new information that he said, that we, we have more PPE than we need. And for quite some time, we've had a, a significant excess of critical hospital beds and incubators, or, you know, inhalators. So, so we're in pretty good shape in terms of the medical side.
So the PPE came in that they had ordered, I know that last week.
Yeah, see, they said they have a lot. The, the critical issue, and, and it is incredibly frustrating to me, because it just doesn't get focused on enough, is why we're not doing more tests. And they did apply to the state to open up a new testing center. I'm not sure why the state has to approve that, but the state did not approve that request for some reason, and, and that wasn't clear why.
Yeah, he had indicated that, or I guess Mike had, is that the, the state had redirected the tests that they thought they were gonna get. The test kits they thought they were gonna get got redirected.
Yeah. Elizabeth, you have a question?
I, I do. I have a question regarding the county calls. I understand that they are now happening on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays only, not every day. And how many council members can be on the call?
Five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or any comments about this item? Is there any public comment?
I have no hands, no notes.
Okay. No public comment from anyone on the phone? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
Okay. Roll call.
Weest.
Hi.
Widmer.
Yes.
Lempress.
Hi.
Lewis.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGolio.
Yes. Okay, we are now moving to item 3.5, which is a discussion and direction regarding the certificates of participation for the town center.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm gonna turn this one over very quickly to Robert Barone and Wing C., who are both on the phone, or Goose, or Maverick, or whatever he is this evening. And also note that the city council subcommittee of the mayor, the vice mayor, and the chair of the finance committee met with the town's finance team earlier this week. And we do need to execute something connected with the COPs on Thursday. So the reason it's before you this evening is to get some concurrence from the council before we move forward in that direction. With that, I'll turn it over to Finance Director Barone. On that, if I could, I'm sorry to interrupt, but last week I asked about this, and you gave a different schedule. You were saying we wouldn't see this for a while. What changed between last week and this week, such that we're hearing it now? During the discussion with the subcommittee, it was suggested by the mayor and vice that it come before the council.
Well, let me clarify.
Yeah.
So, at the subcommittee meeting, which occurred yesterday, we were informed that there was a recommendation from staff and from our consultants to pursue a private placement, and that there was a term sheet, that was an attractive term sheet for a private placement. But that in order to pursue that option, the term sheet had to be executed tomorrow.
No, Friday.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
But the, and, and entering into the term sheet doesn't obligate us to it. We can walk away from it after we enter into it. It's entering into the contract that creates a legal obligation. But I just felt that it was appropriate to, and, and, and the subcommittee concurred with the recommendation to pursue the private placement option. And since we had a day before that had to be executed, I, I thought it was prudent to bring it before the entire council, so all of you could look at the issue. That's why it's before you today.
Okay. Okay.
Bobby Barone.
Yes, correct. Thank you, Mayor. Many names, many names. Yes, before you is the presentation from our subcommittee, and Wing C., Fox from Urban Futures, our financial consultant, is on, on the call today to kind of explain the discussions we had yesterday. And again, yes, the offer sheet is due by May 7th, and we do not, we're not obligated to it. It's just, just to also get back to the bank regarding, yes, we would like to proceed. But again, we're not held to that. Again, I'd like to just turn that, this over to Wing C., since she can explain the presentation that we have before you.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so what I hear you saying is that, is that when you had your meeting on whatever day it was, Tuesday, Monday, when the, when the subcommittee met with the council, you know, there, there was the discussion that, that the private placement at this point in time looks more attractive. And that they were aware of an opportunity, but that opportunity was available now, and we had to act now versus wait. Is that, that's what I understand?
In general, yes, that's true, although we'll get into more detail in the presentation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Correct. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Wing C.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the council. It's good to be here with you over Zoom. Still getting used to this format myself. So we do have the slides up, and Anthony, could you please move to the next slide?
One second here.
Great, and this is a sort of a abbreviated version of what we went through with the subcommittee on Monday. But really, what, what the background is, we were kind of always considering a public sale option until COVID-19 hit. And as I'm sure everyone knows, since the stay-at-home order has been in place, it started in middle, mid-March, the municipal markets completely stopped. No bonds were getting sold in about the two weeks of time. And, and so at that point, we really thought it would be good to seriously pursue and consider a private placement option. And so we've been dual-tracking that. So we, what we did was send an RFP out to banks for a private placement option, wait to see what we got back. And we, we thought, once we get those bids back, we can then compare that to where we think the public sale market is today, and then get direction from council on which route to pursue. So just a little bit of background in terms of the public market right now. There really hasn't been, even though the market's slowly coming back, rates are still near historic lows. Most of the deals that are coming to market are the really high credit general obligation bonds, where there's an ad valorem tax pledge, or enterprise bonds. And not as much, although some general fund leases. They are definitely in the spotlight because investors are concerned about what cities are facing in light of COVID-19, what the impacts are to revenue, and also additional unexpected expenses that might not be reimbursed by the federal government. And so they're looking really closely at the liquidity of issuers, meaning the reserves. They, they want to see very liquid, good liquidity. And they, they want to really understand how COVID-19 impacts the financial position of cities and towns. So the town is in a very, very strong position in that you are not at all exposed to sales tax or TOT revenues, very largely property tax, which, you know, will not be affected in the near term. If you see some impact, it'll be later on. And also, the town has very strong reserves, with the caveat that it, it doesn't plan on spending the reserves down significantly on the project or, or otherwise. And then also, what's changed in the public market is that the larger transactions are seeing much better pricing than smaller transactions, like the one the town is looking to bring to market. Anywhere from 10 to 20 basis points better. Also, since COVID-19, we haven't seen any call options other, shorter than 10, or maybe even nine, but typically, right now, we're really mostly seeing 10-year par calls. So again, with that, we wanted to see if we could pursue a private placement option to see if we could get a good rate with terms that the town prefers. Next slide, please. So we've reviewed this with the town before, but, you know, some of the differences, just to remind you about public sale versus private placement. Public sale is to the general market. Private placement is with a limited number, and most often with one institutional investor, meaning a bank. For the public sale, you have to have an offering document, which takes quite a bit of time to develop and review. You have a continuing disclosure requirement every year until the bonds are refunded or mature. Whereas with a private placement, you do have some continuing disclosure obligations, but it's generally just sending them the annual audits. No offering document required. With a public sale, you're, you really have a interest rate risk up until the day that you sell the bonds, and really, until you close the bonds. And whereas with a private placement, the offers that we got are locked through a period of time. It used to be a little bit longer, now it's a little bit less, but the, the bids that we got are locked through June 11th. So there's no interest rate risk there. Other, other elements, public sale is usually higher cost of issuance, but a lower interest rate overall. Whereas private placement typically has less cost of issuance, but higher, can be higher rates. Private placement, again, also less staff time, because we're not developing the offering document. We're not going to the rating agency. And then a private placement has a shorter timeframe to get accomplished, which is also why you see a bit of the shorter timeframe to close if the private placement option is pursued. Next slide. So, so we worked with the placement agent firm Stiefel, who sent out RFPs to over 20 banks, including Wells Fargo, which is the bank that the town banks with. Not surprisingly, a lot of the banks just weren't able to respond, because they're all working on the PPP loans. And also, even in the municipal market, they've been swamped since the public market pretty much seized up. A lot of issuers are looking at private placement options. Having said that, we did receive three very, very strong bids, including is the one highlighted you see from Capital One, where we actually even went back and negotiated their bid five basis points. Originally, they wanted call premiums. We were able to negotiate that away and allow for a five-year call at par with no premium. And so here, we have a summary of some of the additional requirements, but, you know, right now, we're really focusing in on that Capital One bid, since it's the lowest out of the three. They don't have any onerous covenants that they're requiring, all very standard. And then, you know, I'll take any questions on, on the bids that came in. But the, I wanted to also mention that the max borrowing amount is 9 million. That's what went out in the term sheet. So we kind of said somewhere between 7 to 9 million, because we know the town hasn't decided on the exact amount of proceeds that it desires yet. But the rate, again, with Capital One is 2.2%. This is a 10-year amortization with a five-year call, so an excellent rate. And so what typically happens is the bank asks for the term sheet that has, you know, the summary of these terms plus a few others to be signed by the town. It is all subject to approval by the council. It's still going to council on May 20th with all the final form documents, and that's when the town would authorize issuance of the COPs to Capital One. But the term sheet is really so that there's a mutual understanding that we're moving forward with them, and that that's the selected path that the town has chosen.
I believe Vice Mayor Lewis has a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Wing C., for that summary. The chart shows Capital One at the max par of 9 million, and the other two at 7 to 9. And I know that you have clarified that. We're looking at between 7 and 9. But just to clarify, that Capital One would do something less than the 9.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have to feel that we're locked into that. And through the discussion with the finance team and consultants and George, that that 9 million was something that we really, I mean, would be on the way outer edge, and probably not something that we would really be considering.
Yeah, so we have to give them a final amortization, not, not soon, but, well, you know, when we're starting to draft the closing documents, they'll want a final amortization, and even now, they kind of, they'd like an estimate. So we understand that that's going to be discussed at the next council meeting. We'll have a better sense.
And, and just.
Wing, I have a question.
Okay.
Did you want to follow up, Elizabeth?
I do, just one real quick follow-up, just to add to that about the term sheet. We did talk about the downside of putting out a term sheet and then not going forward. Maybe you could elaborate on that a little bit, because I think that's something to consider.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, signing the term sheet is a good faith effort for both sides to move forward. So what the bank needs to do between now and closing is their council needs to review the legal documents that our bond council has drafted. And, you know, if there's any terms that we need to negotiate, they also need to go through their process of final credit approval. So again, this is sort of the, you know, a handshake to say, okay, let's move forward. Capital One, you move forward with the credit approval process. The financing team is going to move forward with the documents and approval with council, and then we'll agree upon a closing date. So, you know, the term sheet is, is subject to approval by council. It's very clear to the bank that there's no, I mean, neither side is really binding with this term sheet. But why it's important is, you know, we, either way, if the bank were to walk away after this, it would really look bad on them. If the town were to walk away after this, unless there's a good reason, then, you know, there's some reputational risk there, and that affects your access to the market.
So Wing, one thing that you.
So Wing, one thing that you said is that the private placement locks in the rate, which is proposed at 2.2%. And. When is it, and, and yet we're not obligated, because until the closing, I take it. If that is true, then if interest rates were to go down between when we sign the term sheet. And the estimated closing. Would that be a good reason to walk away from and try to renegotiate the rate?
So that, it's pretty akin to walking away from the term sheet, that's not, I mean, again, there's some reputational risk there and we would. What we would need to do is just bid it back out again, which would just, it would delay the process and. It, it, it would, would not reflect positively on the town. So the idea is you, you're, you are happy with this rate, we're locking it in. There's no downside, but there's no upside readjustment either.
Right, okay, Bill?
Yeah, okay, a couple of questions. So first off. I understood that we couldn't get a five, a five-year with a private placement, so okay, I understand that. I went to the next chart and the par amount you've got there is seven point, almost 7.2 million. And if you could just go over that real quick, that'd be great. And then also, once we place. Agree and take out the loan, so to speak. Obviously, before we do that, we have to have our reserves and our debt rate, you know, reserves to debt ratios all in order and approved. To make sure that we're, you know, highly rated. But after we've placed it, what obligations do we have on that ratio?
All really good questions. So I did want to just clarify that it's not so much that we can't borrow for five years due to what the banks or investors want. It has to do with the way that. A lease is structured, so you, the amount of assets that you have, if you shorten the lease payments, the annual payments in half. Those annual payments go way up. And you really have to have assets that you're leasing to support that high lease payment. So that, that's why there does, the town doesn't have enough assets to support the, the high, the much higher rental payments. And that's just, remember that these COPs and lease revenue bonds are supposed to mimic real leases. So, you, you know, if you, you're leasing the property and you, you don't think that the fair rental value is that high, then we can't do that. So that, that's the, the background for, for why we were doing a 10-year amortization with a five-year call.
So, so before you get on to the next one, so what you just said though was, I guess I've got a question on. Normally, you know, a bond, or I guess in the case maybe of a COP. You, you know, you're making your payments on a, on a semi-annual basis, is this not paid semi-annually? Or if I remember right, reading it, I think we have to pay it annually, is that correct?
There's a semi-annual principal payment and, and actually in this case with Capital One, they have a semi-annual principal amortization as well. So they, the payments are made semi-annually.
Okay, all right, and then the 7.2 million?
So, okay, Anthony, the next slide, please. So we had another slide that we presented to the subcommittee that might be helpful, if you want me to pull it up, I can. But this, this shows that in all the scenarios, we're generating seven million in project fund proceeds for the town to spend on the project.
Nope.
Good that you guys can see the disclosures that I'm supposed to give you, so glad we got to that.
The fourth line, you see the project fund amount, that, that's the proceeds.
Yeah, so that's what the town will get from the bond net. And then that also, the borrowing amount also includes the cost of issuance. So in the private placement case, it's pretty straightforward, you, you're borrowing 7.185 million. Seven million is the project fund proceeds, 185,000 is all the cost of issuance. With the public.
Yeah, I didn't know that you, you would include the cost of issuance in the, in the par amount, normally I see that separately broken up.
Yeah, yeah, so it's all together and the, the public sale, as you can see, you're borrowing less than seven million. And that has to do with the fact that in the public market, we're selling those serial bonds that have coupon payments and yields. So if you'd like, I can go into explaining that. But in essence, there's a bond premium that gets generated selling into the public market. Because of that premium, you generate more proceeds with less par amount or less borrowing amount. And. Do, do you want me to explain it in more detail? I can pull up another slide.
No, no, I, I, I get what you're saying, unless the other council members do. But my next question would be, so our payments though would be set. If, if it's a 10-year, for example, then our payments, although we can pay early. But our, but annually what we're paying is, is if it's, if we're doing it over 10 years. One tenth of the, of the seven million plus the interest that's accrued on that, which is $350,000, right? Or less than that, I guess.
If you see the annual, the average annual debt service average, that what we'd be paying.
That, that seems high for 2.72, but okay. But it's, it's a decreasing amount, I mean, normally, or is it a fixed amount?
That is the average annual level debt service, so each year it's about that amount.
And, and are we paying any of the principal with that?
Yes, the principal gets amortized semi-annually.
So the, is the principal included in what we owe the, the eight million? No?
Yes, the 805,000 is principal and interest.
Got it, got it, so if we were to get something that was five years. Then it would be something like probably what, one, one point seven, yeah, 1.7 million or something like that.
Right.
But we don't have enough assets to allow us to do a five-year stretch.
Yeah, so there's no five-year on the table, it's a 10-year with a five-year call. And, and frankly, the reason that this private placement is particularly attractive is there's no. Added cost to execute the call.
Well, the only reason I, I ask that, Rick, is, is that when we get to the budget, there was 1.1 million dollars put in for. For repayment, but maybe I'll wait till we get to that to see, maybe there's.
Fair question, when we get to the budget.
Well, we can, I can address that straightforward and easy now. The, the staff report for this was put together on Tuesday and the staff report for the budget was put together last week.
Okay. Already $200,000 better, 300,000.
So this is just an informational item there. Wing, maybe you, if, if I recall properly, there, if we knew that we were going to execute the call. And pay off the whole thing. And we had both the private placement and the public sale in hand. There would be some small cost advantage to the public sale, as I recall.
That's correct, so if you look at the last three rows, the third to last, as you were mentioning, is the average annual debt service, which is, is PNI. It's principal and interest each year. And then the total debt service, the 8.04 versus the 8.087. I'm just looking at the current market public sale versus the private placement. You can see that the private placement would be a little bit lower. And that's assuming you don't call in five years, that's assuming you pay it off in 10 years. The last row is the debt service to call, meaning what, what you would pay total if you were to absolutely call it. On June 1st, 2025. And it is a little bit higher because it's basically reflecting that in the five years before you call the bonds. You're paying more, a little more debt service than you would in a public sale. You're borrowing a little bit more, so you've got a little bit more of an amortization being paid off. And then, then once you get to the call date, you have a little bit more principal to pay off as well. So, and then the other columns just shows you, what does it look like in the public sale? If we were, if interest rates were to go up 25 basis points or up 50, because again, we don't know what the market will, will look like with the pub, public sale option. Until we actually go to price the bonds, it could be easily 25 or 50 more. It could also, the other scenarios that it could be lower than today. And again, sort of the, the upside downside that we were talking about before.
So just to highlight for the council, that's the judgment call. If we knew we were going to pay it off after five years and we're willing to take a slight risk, because nothing's certain in this market. The public, the public sale option would be slightly cheaper, but we do have this offer in hand. And it was the subcommittee's judgment that that was the wiser decision to pursue.
Yeah, and just to give you a context, I mean, if you look at the plus 50 scenario, then the private placement is, is better in all respects, right? And during this time, we've seen market move 50 basis points just in one day. Again, it could also move the other way, but it's rolling, it's rolling the dice if we go with the public sale.
So Wing, I have one question, which is, is the call option in the private placement a one-time deal? Or if we didn't execute it at the fifth anniversary, could we execute it at the sixth?
You could, anytime, it's actually, this call option is at any time, sometimes a call option is only on an interest payment date. This is anytime after June 1st, 2025.
Okay, great.
Rick, if I could.
Yeah, I, I wanted to offer the subcommittee to give a report if either of them would like to, and, and you each have your hands up. Bob, do you want to go first since you haven't spoken?
Sure, I think a key point that wasn't, as men mentioned today. They went to 20 banks for this private placement and got three responses. And as I recall from yesterday. The disruptions in the municipal bond market, which were substantial. Is part of the reason and there's, it's still starting to trend back up. It went way up, went down and was starting to trend back up. So. If we were to postpone this. We might go out to 20 banks and get nobody interested, that's number one. And number two, the, the public sale, you're taking some risk, you, you don't really know what you're going to get. They gave their best estimate here, but, so for the overall difference over a five-year span, worst debt service to call. Personally, I think it's a no-brainer to take the burden to hand.
Great, Elizabeth?
Thank you, Mayor DeGoya, and thank you, Bob, for speaking. I was actually going to ask the mayor to call on you as the other committee member on the call yesterday for your comment on it. I think this makes a lot of sense to me, just given all of the uncertainties in the public markets and. The world and it, it. I think we should pursue this and try to put something like this together and then we, it, it just makes a lot of sense to me. So I am in support of that.
Great, so let me just confirm that there's no public comment.
I've known, sir.
Okay. Do any of the other members of the council have questions? This is just an informational item. It's the recommendation of the subcommittee to go with the staff recommendation, which is to enter into the term sheet tomorrow. But the final decision on this will be made at the May 20th council meeting. And if no one has any comment or question.
I, I, I've had a question for a while, and I think Bob addressed it, but I want to make sure that I'm, I'm understanding it. I'm looking at these publics, the, the public sale terms that are there. And I'm a little confused about whether they would be available at all. Can you address that? Just, it feels like there's so much uncertainty in this space that that, we may go out and get nothing, is that accurate?
That's correct, I mean, that's, that's why we're showing these three different scenarios. This is the best guess of the underwriter where they think the market is today. There is no guarantee until we, when we go to price the bonds, which in that case would be in next month. So we, we have no idea what the market will look like at that point.
And then I guess I'd have a question for, for Mona, which is, is this really a informational item? I think entering the term sheet is kind of a big deal. Is that something should be voted on, or is that something we should just give direction on?
I am going to look at the language and the agenda again, and it says here that. You are requested to provide direction and feedback. So this would be an allowable action.
Bill?
Yeah, my, my comment was similar to Mike's, is that if we're entering the term sheet and, and the words that we've heard today have been. Entering, agreeing to enter the term sheet, and then when we vote on it backing out, because we think of whatever, whatever reason is. Then, then this isn't an informational item, it's, it's, it's a vote. Whether it's a voter or not a vote, it's, it's a commitment on the part of the council. And I think that we need to be very clear, all of us, each of us individually, of how we feel on it.
Just for a further clarification, for purposes, I understand that historically, Atherton has treated its study sessions as informational and as not taking action. However, for purposes of the Brown Act, this is a duly noticed meeting. And the description on the agenda item does state that the council is being sought to provide feedback and direct, direction on a concern. On a considered term sheet, and therefore you do have the ability to do that.
Okay. If I could, through the mayor?
Please, Carrie.
Yeah, you know, I see some of the similar concerns or comments that Bob had made. And in light of the changing market conditions, I think there is a, a risk that what we do know today will be clearly different than tomorrow. And I, I think there is going to be a surge and a rush to some degree from municipalities to go in and. To try to secure some form of funding like COPs for things, just because of the uncertainty. So, you know, I'm in favor of the private placement component and giving us some assurance at this point.
Anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, I was going to suggest, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, that we, we, if we don't have a formal vote, we at least get on the record, everybody, individually. Because I do think this is a fairly significant action by the council.
Well.
I can agree with you on that.
I, I think we could take a formal vote, it's not inconsistent with direction to, I mean, it, it. It, it would be a vote to approve the private placement and approve staff entering into the private placement. It's going, it, it's an undefined amount. It's seven to nine million and it won't be defined until after our May 20th council meeting. Would that work?
The action would not be to enter into the private placement yet, because the bank hasn't, that happens on May 1. Yeah.
Term sheet only, yeah.
But to support staff to enter into the term, to sign the term sheet, I assume you sign a term sheet.
Correct.
Mayor, Mayor DeGoya, I think that the council could take a motion followed by a roll call vote. Providing the specific direction to the council in furtherance of the term sheet that was discussed during this meeting.
Very good.
So based on that, I, I'd like to make a motion that the council agreed to having the city manager sign the term sheet. For a private placement with a par amount of 7.185 million, project fund of $7 million. With a potential call option in five years, as shown on the.
I, I'd like to amend that to be between seven and nine million. Actually, George, you were talking more about what number, was it eight and a half or something?
The term sheet has a range between seven and nine million, we're not exactly sure what that is, that's why we're coming back on May 20th. Details of the cash flow and have a deeper conversation around an exact amount. The term sheet though is arranged with Capital.
The term sheet, though, is arranged with capital one.
So, so Bill, the amendment to the motion would be, rather than setting the amount at 7 million, it would be to authorize staff to sign the proposed term sheet by capital one, which is for seven to nine million, with the amount to be set after we decide at our May 20th meeting.
Okay, so in, in the next, the next meeting, we're going to finalize the number then. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I, I agree.
I'll, I'll second that motion as clarified by Mayor DeGoya and accepted by Councilmember Widmer.
Okay. Anthony, you want to take a roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Weest?
Hi.
Widmer?
Yes.
Lempers?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
And Mayor DeGoya?
Yes.
Okay. I think that does it for that item. And that moves us to item number four, which is discussion and direction on purchase of additional Flock automated license plate readers.
Members of the council, this is a PowerPoint presentation as well. This one's going over to the chief and Commander Wade. And I think the chief's in Seattle.
Oh, I can see it.
And he's also on mute.
He must be Seattle, he's got a cougar sign behind him.
Let's unmute the chief.
I'm unmuted.
There you go.
Yes, I'm in my hometown of Monroe, Washington. We got the, we ready to get that up, Anthony?
Yes, sir. If you mean your other hometown, right?
Yes, oh, yes. And unlike Bobby Barron's past presentations, mine will be brief, concise, and to the point.
All right.
I looked over the charts, I don't know if that's going to be true.
All right, here we go. So, members of the council, mayor, and members of the public, we're, we're, what we're presenting today is our proposal for our Flock project. And just as a quick recap, this project came before you a little over a year ago, back in March, when we initially presented the idea. In October of 2019, we came back before council with representatives from Flock, which is the license plate reading camera vendor, and also representative from the NICRIC, which is a Northern California Intelligence Center, explaining more about the, the technology and how the information is used. And then in November of last year, council approved installation of two Flock cameras, one at the entrance to the park and one at the exit. And if you have the, you have the, the main slide up, Anthony? Back number, back to the very front. So this just gives you a representative of what the technology is. Camera with a solar panel on the right, and then a camera, how it looks today on the poles that are in the park. Next slide. And so this is the position that they are in today. Next slide. And this gives you an idea of the, the technology and the resolution that we have of one of our patrol cars entering the park, clearly depicting the license plate number. Next slide.
Chief, was that car moving?
It was.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And this next slide is lessons learned. As we explained to council before, we were hoping and intending that the solar-powered option would work best, it's easiest. But the camera that was installed at the exit to the park by the Gomor House was quite shady. It did show that there were challenges. Next slide.
Well, wait, the question, the question is, was the camera at the entrance or the exit, the one that was hardwired to the power system or the one that was solar powered?
Yeah, the camera that's hardwired now is at the exit to the park. It was solar in a shady area. We thought it would work, proved not to work. And so we moved it to hardwire power.
And, and did you move the solar-powered over to the entrance? Or do we not have one on solar power right now?
I'm sorry, we do have one on solar power at the entrance to the park.
Okay.
Chief, the question we say didn't work, i- is it not working because of the lack of energy, you know, powered by the sun, or because of the, the shade interfering with the camera pictures?
Lack of energy. So when we worked with the vendor, they were confident that their new solar technology would work, and this was a good experiment. It gives us a very good idea, if you approve, when we start deploying them around town, what capability and where it might work best.
And, and the one that had that picture of the, of the police car and the license plate, that was a sun, solar-powered camera?
That's correct.
Okay.
Next slide, please. And this just shows you the actual hardwired camera now at the exit to the park. Easy tracking for the chief and Mrs. McCully when we leave the Gomor House. Next slide.
I know, we should be checking that out.
My officers, somehow my officers think they're going to get alerted when I leave the house, so they can really get back to work. So we'll see how that
Hey, Chief, can you go back to the previous slide real quick?
Yes.
Just want to point something out. So when we talked about having power, it was just one of those best-case scenarios. As you see the, the upright pole, so that's the exit camera there. And there was already a pre-existing power source there because of one of the town surveillance cameras. So it was, it made things very easy for us to be able to plug into that. And by easy, just to give you a perspective on what it takes to get one of the cameras up when it's not solar power, is if you have to dig, you need a permit. So we didn't need to dig, so we didn't need a permit. And it just was a lot of cost savings and a lot of headache having it in that convenient location. And I just say that to point out so that you know going forward that it, that it's not always the case.
Just through a question for Commander Wade and the chief. So in all these locations that you're identifying, how many not-so-hard locations do we have? Or are all of them really hard? And will we be, be needing to dig?
We won't know until we actually put them up, because that was part of this initial testing process. Because if you look at this location at the exit camera, there are certain times of the day when it is getting pretty good sunlight, at least I, what I would have thought was good sunlight, but not enough to power the camera. So it's really going to be, some areas are going to be really obvious, and some areas, we don't know yet.
Chief, or Commander, were there signs up as well? Did we put signs up saying, hey, you're on camera?
There, there are signs that Flock had, comes with the camera. And I believe we have an image coming up, and then
Are they in the park now? I don't think I've noticed them.
Yeah, they're in the park now. They're not very large, and they're red, and it just says monitored by Flock. They're not very effective from my perspective. But as we get through the slides, you'll see the proposed signs that we have that are fairly large and will be posted at the main entrances to town. And then also a proposal would be potentially putting a smaller version of the sign that has our police seal on it on each of the poles as further visibility of the term.
Okay.
Next slide, Anthony.
Councilmember Lempers? In addition to the Flock camera sign, though, coming into the park, the park already has surveillance cameras, so there's already existing surveillance camera signage as you go into the park.
Right, right. I'm aware of that.
Okay.
So this slide is just leading us into the next part of the discussion. So obviously, more cameras, more coverage. And we're going to get into our two options and then our recommendation. Next slide, Anthony. So working with Flock as part of their service, they did an analysis of our town, and they came up with a recommendation of 27 locations, perimeter and interior, to give us what they felt was the most efficient look. Also, too, to be honest, they're in the business of selling cameras, so we anticipated they might be higher than what we felt. And so we did put together a committee within the police department, leverage our own expertise, to take a look at the town and see what we felt we could possibly do, keeping in mind, you know, some fiscal restraint. So if we could go to the next slide. And with the 27 cameras, if you recall, Flock markets our cameras for lease for $2,000 per camera. That includes installation, and includes maintenance, and includes all the storage of the data within that $2,000 a year lease per year. It also includes any technology upgrades, which we expect will happen if we venture into an agreement with Flock. So it also comes with upgrades as they upgrade their system for a total of about $54,000 annually. And it does cover all the, from their proposal again, the major entrances to the town and interim. So our next slide. And proposal two is the results of our police department committee taking a look. They came up with 16 street, place to teach it going around the town, mainly looking at those main entrances coming into our town. And you can see the locations there. I believe there was a question about Glenwood, why we didn't select that. It, it is a cut through, as with some of our other camera placements, but we felt what we selected, which is subject to change, what we selected make, made the most sense. And next slide with the proposal for the cost on that. And again, just at $2,000 per camera. So that reduces the cost by $12,000 to $32,000 annually.
Chief, can you go back one chart, please?
Yes.
It looks like there's a one down in Menlo Park?
No, there wouldn't be one in the city of Menlo Park.
Well, it's right down here, that's Yeah, but then you have one that, once it hits the, the entrance.
No, you, you're right. That, that's, that's what it shows, but it's, yeah, there's a fire station corner for cameras that we thought, at least to show, this is more theory here. This is an approximate location of where the cameras would go. It's not an exact pinpoint, but it's a representation of four cameras on Alameda.
It looks like, the, the, obviously, you, you guys are going to make the right decision on looking at crime data and traffic and stuff like that. But it looks like in some cases, we've got cameras bunched together. In other cases, like in this one here, it's just not clear where it really is, so.
Well, it, it, it's actually pretty close to where it would be. So the theory is, is with the limited amount of cameras, we wanted to be able to catch cars that we looked at that were involved in crime coming into town on one end of Alameda, near Valparaiso, and then on the other end of Alameda towards the, towards Stockbridge. But we wanted, we also took into consideration that there could be cars coming up Pohemus, and there could be cars coming up Atherton Avenue. So I, while we knew we couldn't get all the streets, we knew that those cameras in those four locations would give us the best chance to catch and go back and look for a vehicle in that area involved in a crime in that area. Because predominantly, of the rash of burglaries that we had over the past couple of years, which we believe were from the crews from out of the country, we found that they were using the 280 corridor and exiting off of 280 on the Woodside Road, just based on the, on, on tracking cell phones. So we felt like we really had to have four cameras on Alameda and four cameras on Middlefield. And that's, that's the reason behind that.
Now, I, you know, okay. Well, you, you, it seems like, I don't want to critique it, but I'm going to, obviously. You know, on Alameda, you got four cameras. I would think that you'd move that one up and put it off of, you know, somewhere off of El Camino going one way or the other. And, and, and because that's, because you've got all of Atherton covered coming off of Al, the Alameda, right? With, with four cameras there, with, with three cameras, you've got it covered. Just remove that one and put it somewhere else. But anyway, that's my comment. I, you know, I, I mentioned to George, you know, I think that, you know, you guys got to look at where the crime information is and decide where to put them. And, and I'm all in favor of, of you getting as many as you need, so, anyway.
Let them move through their presentation. If there's questions of clarification, we can take those now. And then we'll get into discussing it after we've offered public comment.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Easy question, Commander. When, when these things are up, do they take pictures in one direction or two? Like, if you put one of the entrance of a, of town, is it only getting cars coming one direction or both?
That, that, that's a great question. So it tracks the best, which we learned through trial and error at the park, from vehicles traveling away. So when we decided to have the cameras take, for instance, Alameda on one end of the street, one end the other, we want one on one side to catch vehicles coming from the north, heading towards Atherton Avenue on Alameda. And conversely, we wanted to catch them coming off Valparaiso in that area for cars. Well, we wanted to catch cars heading north and south on Alameda from the furthest reaches of town. And the best
I'm sorry, but if you have a camera that's designed to capture a car going north, will it see anything about a car going south or, or nothing at all?
It, it may, but we're not going to rely on it, because the Flock cameras, they are best suited to get one to two lanes of travel at the most going away, which is why we steered clear of the El Camino with these cameras, because it's just too high of a volume to get accurate readings.
Okay, thank you.
Question for the commander.
Yeah.
In these locations that you have set, there are multiple scenarios where multiple jurisdictions are involved, similar to a traffic signal or traffic control device. Do we deal with another agency to support or let them know? Or do we have to have their approval? Is there any process that involves that?
That, that, that's a great question. If, yes, if we're going to put it in another jurisdiction, then yeah, I, I, we have to get permission from that jurisdiction.
Okay.
Through the mayor?
Please.
Since we're on this slide and it identifies the general areas or the general streets where the 16 cameras are going to be placed, could you just give more detail on that? Like where the cross street is going to be, or if they are not going to be at a cross street, between what cross streets, just so that we have a little bit more clarification? Because in your map, you have an arrow pointing into Lindenwood, but I am assuming that is a Marsh camera and maybe a Ringwood camera? I don't, but maybe, just so we have more information on that.
Let me ask the question in a slightly different way. So I understand
I love it when you put words in there.
I, I understand that you've given us these slides to show the general location of the cameras, like Foren, Alameda, and so on and so forth. Today, if we approve going forward, is there a point at which you're going to give us the detailed, exact locations of the proposed cameras?
That's a good question. There absolutely would be. And I think like the commander mentioned, these are general areas that we think are best. And then once we work with Flock to get them installed, they may have to be moved a block or two, depending on light for solar or movement for power. But we definitely will come back with that.
Okay, just to clarify, at this point, you don't have specific locations in mind?
We do, and we, but we didn't include on the slide indicating, because we weren't sure for final.
I, I, I think my guess is the council would like to see those specific recommended locations for the whole list before we finalize placing them.
We can do that, we can absolutely do that.
Absolutely. I would just let you know that one thing you'll have to be aware of is, take the camera number two, which is the current camera at the exit. There are some locations where you have to set up the camera first, let it run for a couple of days, and, and then you either get the thumbs up, or you got to make some tweaks where you get the thumbs down and you get a new system. Or you got, or you make the decision to hook it up to power. So when we give you those locations, they, they will be tentative. Or I should say, pending a couple-day testing period to make sure that they work. And like I said before, some will be obvious locations where there will be sufficient sunlight. And Flock is really good about sending their tech out and making an assessment before hooking it up. We just, we weren't successful with camera number two.
Right, right.
Bill?
Yeah. So, it, of course, i- in the staff report and in, and in this PowerPoint, you're talking about certain number of cameras, certain prices and stuff like that. And this is all going in the next year budget, or are you asking for it now?
No, for the next fiscal budget.
All right, because it was appended, like I mentioned to you the other day, it's appended into a, a staff report, at least that went out initially, that indicated that was, it was an action item for now. But okay, all right, I appreciate that. And so the number that's in the staff report for the budget is that this is the number now. The number that's in the staff report for the budget is that this is the number now you would be amending to. Is that correct?
We're it. Our proposal is recommending a total of sixteen cameras and keep in mind. The what's a really nice feature about flock is this project is totally scalable. It's easily to scale up or scale down. Totally dependent on as much or as little money as you want to put into the project.
And it's and it's an annual amount we're paying. So it's a recurring occurring amount. Of $32,000 a year.
That is correct.
And if if there's a private placement. Let's say Lindenwood Homeowners Association wants to. Put up cameras on their edges. Then. And they're paying to buy those cameras. Are we paying? Is the taxpayer paying the annual amount even though it's going to you as you said you would manage it?
No, you you bring up a good point. That's that's part of it towards the end of the presentation, but I'll discuss it now. It does give us a great opportunity for a public private partnership, and we've been approached by. The Lindenwood Association and the Association of Lloyd and Park. That they'd be very willing to pay for the cameras. These cameras were additionally designed for homeowners association, etc. When I talked to representatives, I said, have you thought out about who's going to administer the program for you? And the possible issues with some private person looking at. Cameras and other sensitive information. And when I proposed, in my mind, it makes sense for them to pay. The annual fee and for the police department to administer and protect the information. And they were all totally for taking all those issues out of their hands, leaving it with the police department. They would simply pay the annual fee. And it doesn't have to be just those two neighborhoods. If residents on a certain street, say Linda Vista. Wanted to cover each end of Linda Vista or Monta Vista or Clay, they could easily come together. And do that, and I know that we could work with Mona for any issues there were with that. Um, but I think it's a great opportunity for a public private partnership to further expand this flock net within our town.
So they would, they would pay for the the $2,000 a month or $2,000 a year. But but it would be wired to the town and the town would be the ones that would be administering and watching it and. Ensuring that certain members of the public only are of your office, you know, in in the in your department. They would be doing once they could see what's there, right?
Correct. So access would be under the strict guidelines, and that's part of the information we reviewed with you with our. Lexible policy, they would not have access to it, fall under our requirements.
Okay.
Is is this under a set term? So, I mean, is it a monthly term or is it a set term of 12 months, three years, five years?
It's it's an annual lease.
Okay.
Chief, one other question. This shows all the flock cameras. What other cameras will we have in town? Don't we have some around the the new police building when we finish that?
We will have cameras around the new police building. We still have cameras at the park. And we currently have cameras at the current police department, which of course those will go away when we transfer to the new civic center building.
Thanks.
Next slide, Anthony. Next slide. So this goes to Councilmember Lempers's question. These are the current signs that flock installs. They're currently on both cameras at the park. And if we go to the next slide, we'll take a look at our proposed signage. These are the large signs that would be at the main entrances to town. As an advisement and as a deterrent for those coming into our town. And we'd also possibly recommend a smaller version like the red flock sign that would go on each camera pole. In town again to increase visibility and act more as a deterrent. Next slide, Anthony.
You say where you where you plan to put those signs?
I think Commander, can you handle that one?
Yeah, yeah. So initially, we came up with with Marsh, Marsh Road, Alameda, Valparaiso. Alameda Stockbridge, Middlefield Bay, Middlefield Ringwood. Littlefield Ensignal, ECR, more Selby off ECR and Selby at Selby. And really, those were just, obviously, those locations are changeable. Those were just the places that we felt. The majority of people come into the town.
Is there any legal requirement similar to. License plate photo camera enforcement where you have to put it in the entrance way to the city, so on and so forth? Is there a legal requirement of notification for cameras?
I'm not aware of a legal requirement for notification.
The red light camera notification requirement is because you're issuing a citation based on it.
Gotcha.
Yeah. I'd love to see a bunch of these.
If I could just further on that. Uh, part of the part of the deal with with this sign and the reason we liked it was because. It's kind of a, it's kind of a mental deterrent. When you drive in, you you basically put on notice, there's no surprises. And there may not even be a camera in the location where this is, but at least people are going to see it. And if we could at least get. Those who are to come here to with the. Not good intentions to do property crime or whatever when they're coming into our town. Just seeing this, we thought was half the battle.
More signs, the mayor.
Yep, Bill?
Yeah, um, so I noticed that the sign you're recommending says. You know, license plates being monitored. Um, and and I understand that that's what you're doing, but these cameras do more than that. And so why don't we just simplify the sign? And like it has here, the flock people, this is video recording in progress. As opposed to license plate, because you can see people's faces. Somebody's looking out the window. And the car that's driving by, you're going to be able to see that. And and uh, you know. I just think that, uh, let's just be honest about it. Well, we're not just looking at license plates, which is the same comment that we had before. With the with the automatic license plate readers, it does seem more than just the plate. And I think we should just be a little bit. Broader in what our description is. So I don't, I don't like the sign. Proposed.
Okay, let's go. Let's finish the presentation and we'll take comments.
So next slide, which I think we covered the public private partnership. The next slide. This is just give me a look for the private partnership of what it could potentially look like. Uh, in the front yard of our residence, of course, aesthetics, I know are very, people are very concerned about that in our town. So it is a very limited impact. And again, depending on the location. It could be a solar mount or also it gives you a look at what the hard mount hardwire would look like. Next slide. So just before I go to questions, I just wanted to wrap up and say, you know, again, this is totally scalable. I I think one of the biggest benefits of this program is the deterrent factor. And would we be possibly pushing crime elsewhere? It's very possible. But I know the feedback from other agencies that have cameras, it is a huge deterrent. It can certainly help reduce and prevent crime. Uh, it's an excellent investigative tool. And just as a quick example, we recently had a dumping incident in the park. Somebody dumped off a king size headboard and footboard. Um, and so when we were made aware of that, we went to the flock footage. We were able to see the vehicle entering with the. Furniture in the back and able to identify the license plate. So I know that's a very minor incident. But it could have been something very serious where we could have been easily tracked to that with this technology. And so with that, I appreciate your time and always happy to take any questions.
Chief. Um, could you also address what an implant limitation schedule might look like? How long would it take you to put up sixteen cameras with flock?
I don't know if I can answer that exactly. I will definitely be working with flock. I know we had some. Delays when we initially installed ours because I know that they were going through some growing pains and especially now. With COVID, I haven't checked what the impacts would be, but. Um, if there is approval to go forward, we'll certainly work with block and get. An installation schedule.
Short answer, those they're not going in all at once.
No, they wouldn't be. It's it's going to take some time for them to come out, make an assessment of our areas. You know, they do their light metering and everything else. Um, my hope would be that by fall, if not sooner. Um, I hate to make those things because often flock was proving me wrong, but I believe now that they're behind. The whole system that I'm thinking summer, fall.
And just to give you a little bit more of an idea, they have, they have two flock technicians for this for the entire Seminole County. And while they are fairly responsive, the good news is is that. They we would be the first agency in our county to get these up and running. So we would probably have first dibs at them. And a part of the process will largely depend on. You know, for as many places we can identify that will for sure handle solar. The process will be much quicker. You could actually, once the tech comes out and hooks up the camera, you can actually get the camera up in a day. Where we run into lag time is when we get a tech out here. And they, we we deem that we can't use the solar. Then we have to figure out, okay, where are we going to put the pole? Where are we going to dig? Uh, do we got to get a permit? Were we going to tap into the power? Historically, flock has not been able to uh, use PG&E poles. To tap into power. Um. So we're, we are not looking at that option. There's one location in town where we actually could. Where the where the town, uh, in speaking with Robert, or we might be able to tap it in that one location is on Marsh Road. At that intersection. So we're just going with the premise that we're not going to have a lot of places where power is going to be really easy to get into, which is why we're really looking hard. To get solar and ninety percent of these locations.
I I can tell you in our, all of our dealings with the company founder and the flock CEO. Uh, they are, obviously, they're a growing company and California is a big market for them. We'd be the first in the area to do it, and they're wanting to use us. Obviously, for I guess free advertisement to show that we got this system in. There are several other communities in our county that are looking at it. But I believe that there would be a priority for us to get our system up and running. So we could be the showcase for the other communities around us to come take a look and see how it's working.
Questions? So just just a quick camera question and technology component. You had mentioned that this is the flock would upgrade the system. Does it also mean that they would upgrade the cameras when the quality of cameras consistently go up? That we would be in that upgrade motion, or if that transition occurs, we'd have to buy it new system, new cameras?
The technology would be included, and that's what's, but not only with their price point, but with their technology, unlike other. Large systems that hang on poles and hardwired and you're stuck with that technology. This one, it's such, it's so scalable. And it's portable that they're able to easily able to upgrade and match technology, unlike other vendors that I have spoken with. When we started to focus on flock.
Right. My understanding is that they also will replace a stolen camera at least once as part of.
Or damaged.
So are there any other questions from the council and then I'll take public comment? Bill, do you have a question? And we'll we'll do comments later.
Okay, great.
I have no questions. I have questions.
Okay, please.
Yeah, um, first for the chief. $32,000, I assume you would, if money's fungible, you could put this into the flock camera, you could put it into personnel, for example, a part time position or. Part of a full time position or whatever. Um, explain to me why this is, why you think this is a better use of money than something that goes towards additional personnel or officers or overtime or something like that.
Well, I think it's a much more better use of money than personnel because unlike personnel. Limited manner of resources and expensive is it gives you the technology so that we can have eyes. Everywhere around town in place. Uh, we're also looking to save money. We don't think it makes sense to continue. To buy mobile units for our new patrol vehicles. They're $20,000 a copy. We have one. Unit that's equipped with it now. I gotta say that I don't think we've had hardly any valid hits with it. And I think it more makes much more sense to have stationary points where we can track vehicles coming into town, where they went and where they left. So when you think about $32,000 a year and having sixteen or twenty seven. Eyes out there constantly monitoring and constantly watching, I think it makes a lot of sense.
And actually, it'll save money, it sounds like it. Otherwise, you'd be coming in for more more expensive mobile units?
Correct, because we won't have to know, you know, we're going to get, say, we get two new patrol cars next year. That'd be an additional $40,000 that we don't have to spend.
Okay, and and a related question on the audit or review process on this, just to ensure that. The guidelines are being complied with and and that we're protecting civil liberties. We've got a number of conversations about that. I can't remember. Where that ended up, but is there, what what kind of audit or review processes there? Are there civilians? Were you able to get civilians involved or not?
So where it ended up and with our Lexible policy, it very specifically says that we have, we'll have an independent audit done of our system. Once a year, what that. Person would be or what the entity would be, we don't know at this time. Um, but I do know that we can, there's all kinds of different. Private auditors through our chiefs association will be able to find an entity. That's regularly conducting audits like our evidence system and other types of audits that could easily audit our ALPR system.
Okay.
Bill, did you have a question? Are you waiting for a comment? Your hand is up.
No, I've got, that was the question that I had for the comment that you said, just wait till after we see any other questions.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay, let's take public comments. I see Greg Conlon. Greg, would you like to make a comment?
And do they work at night? I mean, what about, do you have to have a spotlight on them or what?
No, they do work at night. They're equipped with infrared. Obviously, the capabilities are not as good as during the day, but the. The images that we have seen at night, it detects movement and activates the infrared. And with the reflectability of the plate, it's able to capture and read the plate.
All right, is the financial comment, but just one year then?
It goes from year to year.
Because if the state decided not to make them legal, you wouldn't have a long term commitment?
It would be up to one year.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any other public comments?
I have no other.
Okay, I guess I have one question, which is, were you able to. Catch that person that dumped in the park when you got the plate?
Commander?
We took a case. Unfortunately, I like to tell you about the case that we didn't actually catch up with the person. The vehicle came back to a rental car.
I see.
Um, so unfortunately, uh, we have to do some back backtracking to. Figure out who rented the car and.
Got it. Okay, um, let's take comments on the issue in general.
Okay.
Bill?
Yeah, so first off, um, I am in favor of the cameras. I think that they would add value. Um, as the chief points out, it, you know, it gives us more eyes elsewhere. I do believe when we're, when we're to address, I could think it was Carrie's question or Mike's your question. As long as when we write the contract to to acquire these, we write in that. That will get technology refresh on the cameras and so then they're obligated as they come up with newer versions. Such as maybe they add infrared, more infrared capabilities or clearer cameras, we would go ahead and. And, um, you know, we would get that for free for the same price. I assume that the price is. Locked in, at least for a period of time, there's not going to be any increase in the in the recurring cost. Um, obviously, that's for us to understand, and we should understand that before we approve it because this is not a one year commitment. It's a multi-year commitment as we're planning on putting them up. Uh, it'd be good to know, um, you know, what the, I remember when we put in the light at at Ensignal. Uh, and the light was installed and then we waited several months before the power was there because we did not know that we needed to put power there. Or that the power there was not adequate. I don't know the whole detail, so it'd be good if you work with. Uh, Public Works to verify that we do have capabilities. So once we have our, while we have time to get going, I would hope that we would. Look into that. Uh, regarding Mike's question on the public auditing, well, we already are using the the. The license plate readers, so. Uh, and we have the policy that says we're auditing, so I don't. I don't know what we're waiting on as far as getting a public auditor to schedule a time for them to come in and audit. So I think we should be doing that now as opposed to. Saying we're going to wait. And I made my comments on the sign. We're not going to be just looking at license plates. I realize that's what the overall intent, the initial intent is, but. Just like in this case with the rental car, which many of the. just like in this case with the rental car, which many of the burglars and people that are breaking into homes are using rental cars or they're using stolen license plates. We're going to be looking for additional facial recognition and things like that, anything else we can get. So I just think we should not just say license plate readers, because I think that that's misleading. And it could turn into trouble for us if we ever use this technology to try and, and prosecute somebody. Thanks.
Other comments?
Well, I guess, um, I think that, I think this is great. I think that uh, it gives us eyes where we want them. Uh, and frankly, I think even more importantly, it gives us a significant number of notices that will act as a real deterrent. I, I think that uh, I'd, I'd like to see a list of exactly where uh, you, uh, chief and commander are proposing to place the cameras and the signs. And um, and I, I, I think the council would like to participate with you on that decision on both. And I, I'd like to see more than eight signs. Actually, it sounds like you're proposing more than eight signs, because you're proposing one at each camera. And I've, I honestly think the more important signs are the one at every entrance to the town. Um, I think that will get a lot of attention. I, I think it's a really strong thing to do. I think this is very cost-effective. I want to make sure we don't spend too much time on too many cameras. I don't know how it's going to impact your time, you know, the officer's time in monitoring this stuff. But I think it's a good thing to do, so I'm glad you're pursuing it.
To the mayor?
Yes.
Okay, this is Elizabeth. So I do have um, about, I think, three comments. Um, first of all, um, it makes me a little nervous that we are um, getting, kind of going to be the first in uh, with this company. And uh, it's relatively untested. And so in our community, our county, we would be like the guinea pig. So I'm going to cross my fingers that they do have their technology up and running and in good shape. The other one was about the technology and I'm a little unclear as to the answer that was given to council member Reese when he asked about, would the cameras be upgraded also? Uh, if the software, uh, running the uh, equipment gets upgraded? I would find it a little hard to write it into the contract that they're going to change out the existing camera to input new camera, because Apple iPhone doesn't do that. They'll give you software updates all the time. But if they develop a new uh, five-eyed camera, you're going to pay for that. But uh, that's something I think, according to council member Widmer saying, we'll make sure we write it in the contract that we do get those camera updates. The second, the third one is I do support the uh, the installation of these. And I know that our residents are looking for these and are going to support them. I think that this is something that we really should be doing. I think the signs that the chief has uh, designed about wanting a vehicle license plate uh, is, is a good one, uh, but it could be beefed up. But I think we also are going to be putting the uh, Flock signage on every um, pole, right? No?
No, we would be putting, we'd be putting a smaller version of the police seal sign.
Oh, of the, okay. Because if we were going to put the sign, the red sign that is currently on the um, the two that we have, then that indicates uh, more detail that council member Widmer is requesting. So um, that was my misunderstanding.
And if I could just respond real quickly, so Flock, I, I don't know the number. They have many law enforcement contracts across the country. So we wouldn't be the guinea pig. We would just be the newest one uh, in this area. And you make, you make a really good point about the technology. So we'll make sure that we flush out uh, next week with the Flock CEO, exactly what they mean and in their contract. I'd have to review it, but we'll certainly get that out in clarification.
And, and just, just also to be clear, sorry. Facial recognition, the use of facial recognition by police agencies is banned in California for a short period of time. So that's not what these cameras are doing, even though we've kind of mentioned it this evening.
Yeah, and I think, I think it is important to note that this is a license plate reading camera, although it may capture images. But I, I think if we reworded it to video monitoring, it isn't a video monitoring camera. And I, again, I think it's just important to know. I know there's a lot of privacy concerns. But as our last city attorney and maybe Mona can weigh in, when you're on a public road and a public street, there's absolutely no uh, protection for privacy. You're in a public entity.
Generally speaking, in places of um, public, uh, on public property, there is minimum uh, expectation of privacy. However, there are exceptions to that rule. Um, and as the city manager just indicated, I think until next year, there is a prohibition on facial recognition. So, and even if and when that becomes um, something that we'll be able to do, uh, we have to be cognizant of the fact that the civil code has very stringent requirements for how we maintain that information. Um, the fact that we have to destroy it within three years. If there is any kind of a data breach, we have to provide notice to any affected parties and so forth.
If it counts, can I chime in real quick?
Yeah, sure, Joe.
So, oh, one of the other things, you know, we talk about being one of the, you know, the first agency in San Mateo County to do it. Just to give you some perspective, th- these cameras will give us the ability to do stuff, to do things after the fact in an investigative capacity that we have never been able to do. And we realize that just off what we see at the park. For example, we get what are called track flyers from other agencies about crimes that have been committed. Or say a burglary happened in Atherton and a resident, all they saw was a blue van leaving the area. We don't even know if the blue van is involved. These cameras give us the ability to go back in after the fact and just type in the words "blue van" between a certain period, a, a specific date, specific time. And if there's a blue van, it will let us know. For instance, right now at the park, if I'm looking for that, it will tell me if there was a blue van. Then it will tell me how many times it came back, was at the park in the last seven days. So it's really, like I said, it's not the end-all, be-all and by itself. It's not the answer, but in combination with good witness evidence or good uh, information from other police agencies, this will give us leads that we've never had before.
Thank you.
Great.
Through the mayor?
You have a comment?
Yes, I do. Uh, you know, I've already raised some comments and council vice mayor Lewis just reiterated the issue related to cameras. But I see one big hole in this system, which is the infrared component to cameras themselves. And I wouldn't want to be in a position where we wanted infrared or our public says, hey, wait a minute. How come when it's at nighttime, you guys never catch anybody and get, never get any leads? And you put all this money into cameras and you can't find them? If that technology became available through Flock, I would want our system to have that upgrade component, because I wouldn't want the shady element, no pun intended, to be able to say, oh, they got Flock cameras. They, they don't see anything at night. We'll just go ahead and hit Atherton at night. That is a concern.
So the Flock cameras are equipped with night vision and infrared already. They do capture uh, it's not as good as resolution as we saw in the daytime picture, but it does easily pick up on the reflectability of the license plate.
Okay, does it, I, I, just using Joe's scenario of the park, you obviously don't get the ability to pick up the color depiction that would easily reduce your, you know, investigative background. Does that sound right, Joe?
Yeah, you can, so the, obviously you're right. The, the picture quality is not as good. And the most important thing is getting the plate. Because nine times out of ten, even if we get the license plate, unless they painted the vehicle a completely different color, we have the ability through another system to determine what that vehicle color is. And so, so there, so there is, there is that component.
Okay, I'm good.
Are we ready to go?
I've got a couple of comments, if I could.
Yes, please.
So first, I, I, I do believe there's utility to this. I, I don't, I'm concerned we're going to end up overselling it. I want to be careful, because we've had these conversations over time. It started with, you know, they actually won't, they don't seem to make much difference in the real world. We haven't seen a lot of evidence of actual uh, apprehensions made because of them. And we're sort of moving on beyond that. And, and I want to make careful that we don't, we don't oversell that or set our expectations too high. I, I'll say, I do prefer these to mobile units. I actually like that. I think that's a, a good thing. For, if, if we're voting on this, I, I would not be willing to move forward in this until we get our hands around what a, an independent review program looks like. Uh, I wouldn't want them up until we got that. I do think that's an essential component to this. I worry a lot about the civil liberty side of this. And, and this whole conversation about expectation of privacy. One thing I'd note is we put these up and the reasonable expectation of privacy goes down immediately. So we're kind of redefining our zone of privacy to be smaller and smaller through, through actions like this all the time, but just small incremental actions like this. Um, in this case, I do think it's, it's justified, but I want to make sure that we're being very protective. Make sure these aren't being abused in any way.
No, that's a very good comment. And so, you know, with COVID, it's, obviously there's restrictions on everything. But definitely next week, uh, I will get on finding some audit recommendations and some options for us.
And, and to be clear, there, there's no action you're taking on this particular item. Uh, these are, as the chief mentioned, they're part of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget, the equipment replacement purchase. Uh, so once you adopt the budget in June, then you've kind of authorized us to go make this purchase. We're just seeking direction and feedback at this point. Uh, and as you've already articulated in your feedback, you want to see this as it moves along to identify the locations, the number of cameras, the types of signs, a list of where those signs are going to be. So you're going to see this several more times.
It sounds good.
Um, George, on, on the policy issue, didn't we approve uh, a policy regarding these automated license plate readers several months ago? And maybe we should distribute that as it ended up to everybody. I, I don't know if it ended up as an ordinance change.
No, it was a Lexi Paul policy and yes, you did approve it and it was adopted. We can get that distributed. Uh, and the, the, the agenda item this evening is, is discussion and direction on the purchase of. But it, uh, we are articulating that it is um, part of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. So we're not buying them tomorrow. We're buying them next fiscal year.
Okay, well, you're going to give us some specific lists and I guess we'll be approving the specific dollar amount in the budget when we get to the budget.
Yep.
Any final comments before we move on? Okay, we're moving on to item number five, which is the budget. Is that Robert?
That is Goose, yes.
Yes. It is me. Welcome, Mayor, uh, Council, members of the public, right? Too many names. Um, yes, uh, with you today is the uh, presentation of the general fund operations budget. And then after that, we will parlay that into the discussion of the uh, revenue, special revenue fund and the um, CIP. And so with that, I'd like to start off with the um, presentation. So uh, we're doing the general fund operations budget. Uh, next slide Anthony. We have a little nice. This is a picture of a current town center. You had the art drawing and now you have the actual construction where we're at. And so it's an exciting time. We've been looking forward to this um, for quite some time. And so I'm just wanting to present this uh, for council review. Next slide, slide?
Somebody have an attraction?
The general fund.
I think we're in the civic plaza. Weren't we in the civic plaza there?
Uh, yeah, that, that, that was the PD building, um, looking towards the civic center and that would be the civic plaza area, correct?
Nice.
Yeah, that's the future civic plaza where the current PD and old admin building is. So it's exciting to see um, how that's going to turn out.
Again, so the general. Members who haven't had a chance, you ought to walk by today or tomorrow, because there's a lot going on. There's walls going up, stuff's happening very quickly right now.
Yes.
Are you serving iced tea and cookies at your house as we walk by, Mike?
From six feet, I'll, I'll have to throw it to you or something.
Yeah, you can just put out a table. We could uh, take a, take a, take a beverage.
Yeah, I'm part retriever.
Right? There you go. Um, yeah, so again, the general fund, just real quick, it's our operating fund for the, for the town. Uh, general taxing revenues and other receipts are part of the general fund. Any expenditures, uh, general operating expenditures are part of the general fund and all capital improvement costs not paid through other funds is the, is the general fund obligation. Um, next slide. So general fund major revenue sources, as we've been discussing in previous meetings, uh, property taxes comprise most of our general fund revenue. Um, it's at seventy-two percent um, in fiscal year budget. Uh, charges for services, that's building department revenue, planning, public works revenue, um, police revenue, that's thirteen percent of our general fund revenue. And then E-RAP is at um, seven percent of our revenue. Just wanted to say, uh, revenues for our budget, if within the staff report, total revenues are sixteen point three million, three eight million. Again, expenditures are fifteen point three two seven million. And that gives us a excess revenue over expenditures of one million sixty-one thousand. And this is um, without the E-RAP component below the line. Next slide. Real quick, property taxes and E-RAP, our revenue sources, just a quick highlight, our nineteen twenty E-RAP was one point seven million. Our budgeted E-RAP in this twenty twenty-one budget is at one point one million. That's what's discussed in our previous study session, uh, previous meeting. And currently in the staff report, we're budgeting at one point one million. It's the uh, E-RAP that we receive over prior fiscal years. Property taxing the fiscal year twenty twenty-one is projected at twelve million four hundred fifty thousand per fiscal year. That's a approximate five percent increase over the nineteen twenty mid-year budget. Next slide. So real quick, this is just a uh, a review of, of the property tax and E-RAP component for the last couple of years. So we, in sixteen seventeen, uh, E-RAP and property taxes at ten point six million. Um, and in the projection of this fiscal, the twenty twenty-one year, it's thirteen point one million. Um, that is inclusive of one point one million E-RAP and property tax of twelve million forty-eight thousand. So you can see the increase over time of property taxes.
If E-RAP comes in at its normal amount, half a million dollars plus more, that number would of course go up, right?
Correct, it would go uh, probably thirteen point six million or seven million, thirteen point seven.
Wow.
Uh, next slide. So yes, again, this is just a review for the E-RAP, the year over year. So you can see from fiscal year sixteen seventeen, we're at one point one million, one three million. Um, each year it's increased incrementally to one point two eight million in uh, seventeen eighteen. And if you focus on the eighteen nineteen and the nineteen uh, twenty fiscal year, they went from, from one point six million to one point seven million. Um, in our current year, we had budgeted one point three million and one point seven million came in. And then looking at the twenty twenty-one budget, uh, with the whole state um, grab component and, and not knowing where that uh, that area looks or that avenue for the state, um, we're projecting at one point one million. And again, that could um, decrease, but um, right now, one point one million, I think that's the sentiment right now is going back to the sixteen seventeen levels. And again, um, E-RAP could come in as normal. In the last two years, it's between one point six and one point seven million in E-RAP funding. Next slide. Uh, the next major revenue is building revenues. Um, you can see in prior fiscal years, um, just the trend of, of E-RAP revenue, um, building revenue. Um, at, during our fiscal year nineteen twenty budget, we had budgeted one point six nine million um, in building revenue. Um, with our recent COVID experience, with the shutdown of, of building department, we expected one point two million um, in, in um, building revenue. So going into the twenty twenty-one budget, we're projecting one million uh, three hundred fifty-eight thousand in building revenue. So there was a decrease in the building revenue component. And right now, it's, it's just building revenues down. Uh, building permits are down about two hundred sixteen thousand in our projection. Uh, grading and drainage, about fourteen thousand, plant checks down about. Grading and drainage, about 14,000, plant checks down about 95,000, entry removal down by 23,000. So the total reduction from our 1920 budget to next year's budget is about 240,000 reduction in revenue. Again, this is just a projection. We're, we're starting to pick back up on our building component. Our building permits just started this week, and there's the sentiment that there's that area could see an increase in, in the increase of permits being pulled for residential construction as it ramps back up. And now we're entering our summer months, and usually that's when everything ramps up in our building construction in our area. Next slide. Another major revenue fund is our park fees. With the COVID, the park, plant, park events have been stopped completely. And so in our 1920 budget estimate, we were projecting 238,000 in, in revenue to the park. In next year's budget, we're projecting 70% revenue of what our current estimate of 238,000. So we're estimating 166,000 in park event revenue. Again, this, the events are still on hold. We don't know when they'll come into play. Their sentiment that they're, that's part of the last stages of the state's plan of allowing of group gatherings. So we'll continue to monitor that, but we're at, we're projecting 70% in revenue for the 2021 fiscal year.
Robert, you don't have 1920 adjusted here. What's your number for that, or do you have one?
Oh yeah, the 1920 estimate, it's 238,000.
The adjusted.
That was, for, for, for the COVID, it was 166. We were, we were projecting it 70% below our 238,000.
I'm asking a different question, which is we're now almost done with 1920. So where, where's that coming?
Well, 1920, we're, we're coming in, we've, up until this, so the shutdown, we've had 207,000 in revenue for the parking event is what we're, what we received so far. So we were, we were on plan to meet that 238,000 budget. Again, April, May, and June are big, big events for the park, a lot of company events. So we feel that once this is back up, yeah.
Robert?
Correct, yes.
He's asking, we're not gonna get 238,000 for the park in the current fiscal year?
No.
What do we expect to get in the current fiscal year for the park?
Right now, it's 207,000. As of, as of no additional revenue because everything's closed. So we, we're at 207,000. We don't see any other events coming in. So, you know, we're about 31,000 below our projected budget of 1920.
Not so bad.
Next slide. So our General Fund summary, here's our 2021 revenues. As you can see, it's, it's just a roll-up of all our revenues. E-RAP is included in here at 1.1 million. So that brings our total General Fund revenues of 17.4 million for the fiscal year. Next slide. This is a, you can see that art rendering and the actual library and how that's going right now. Library, as you all know, has been on hold and will continue soon. I think it just already started continuing this, this Monday. So you can see that where we're at with the library, and so that, that will start picking back up just like the civic center component. Next slide. So just a, just a quick snapshot of General Fund major expenditures out of all our departments. You can see they're hovering around with a 5% to 8% of our General Fund expenditures. Police Department's about 55% of our total expenditure budget of the General Fund. Next slide. So real quick, personnel costs, in the staff report, the miscellaneous normal cost rates for calpers are included. Again, just want to highlight that these rates have increased. However, we have less, there's the 1% reduction in the miscellaneous rates and a 3% reduction in the public safety rate. So for example, public safety is at 25.54%. So our rate will be at 22% for this upcoming fiscal year. One thing I'd like to highlight, that our UAL payment is projected at 1,23,000. This is an increase of 195,000 from this current fiscal year. Next slide. Again, personnel costs and benefits, we've contributed 5 million to OPEB. That, quick highlight on that, there was about 7 million in the funds, in the trust fund. Want to highlight that our ARC payment for the fiscal year 2021 is 628,000. Of that amount, 481,000 is the retiree health pay-as-you-go component. So 128,000 is what we'll pay additionally to the trust in next fiscal year to fulfill our ARC obligation. Workers' comp, we have no anticipation of equity replenishment this year, fiscal year 2021. In previous years, we've contributed towards our equity, and this fiscal year was 110,000. So a quick recap on the department budgets, there's a labor cost adjustment of 2.9% for the APOA MOU. And it's the same for other departments, and this is a placeholder only. Operational expenditure adjustment for total General Fund is about 3.2% in the 2021 budget. Next slide.
As an increase.
Correct, as an increase. Just want to highlight some major operational costs within, within the General Fund. We have professional service contracts that include our building contract interwest IT services, about 900,000, MCE is in there, 681,000. We have park event services, custodial services, our planning services, legal services. And then also in the public works, we have contract maintenance services for tree and streetlight repair and, and some contract engineering if we do, for projects for, within the town, CIP specific and town specific. Next slide.
Just a note on those, Robert, or in council, the, the building contract, as you know, is related to the revenue side.
Correct.
The building permits, MCE is a contract based on use and need out in the field. Custodials sort of fixed, park event is based on the revenue side, and planning is a fixed ones as well as legal.
Yes, thank you, George. On that. Yeah, I'm going on to the expenditures for the general administration. This includes city council, administration department, and city attorney department. So the projected 2021 budget is 1,253,000. There's a highlight in the staff report, city council only went up 8,000. That's due to the election expense for this coming fall, general election. City attorney budget had increased about 96,000. That's due to a new contract into this next fiscal year. And also for outside litigation of budget component. And so it's, it's about 70,000 for that. Administration increased about 52,000. Again, that's the placeholder UAL component increase, normal cost increase from PERS. Next slide. Finance Department had shown the, the increase of 24,000 to 803,000 for the 2021 budget. Again, this is due salary placeholder and benefits increase of, that's the 2.9%. Also, there's an increase in the UAL payment and the calpers rate. It's about 11,000 on the increase side of that component of the 24. And then there's a minor decrease in some operations expense of 200, $2,700. Next slide. Planning Building Department, as you can see, the combined expenditure was 1.6 million in this fiscal 1920. And the pre, in the future fiscal year of 2021, it's projected at 1,504,000 of that. It's 1,151 is the building department. And again, that's driven, as Georgia just mentioned, that's revenue driven. And so that component is based off of the revenue that we're projecting. And so we're projecting about 1.1 million in the building department. And the planning department increase is, is at 253,000. So that makes the 1.5 million. Just a real quick highlight, building department had decreased 170,000. Again, that's the revenue component. There's a decrease of 186,000 due just to the contract life services for interwest for that reduction. And planning had a 5%, yeah.
So you, you show the 1920 budget and the estimate, which I think we did at mid-year. As a result of the shutdown, wouldn't the end cost for this come in below the 1.65 million?
Yes, well, at, at mid-year, we projected, I believe, building department went down to about 1.2 million.
But the building and planning, the number you're showing is 1.659. And I'm just saying, the mid-year estimate. impacted by the, they were both impacted by COVID-19.
Correct, and that, and that's just an estimate for budget, correct. And so they're gonna come in lower than this, than the 1.6 million as far as the actual expenditure for that. That was just where we were at prior to COVID. And again, and still, for the 2021 budget, it's still below what we project. Again, of that 1.5 million, 1.1 is building department, and then 353,000 is the planning department. Again, in 186, that's 186,000 reduction in the building department into next fiscal year due to reduction in revenue on the revenue side. Our revenue went down as well, about 340,000. So that's, that's also revealed in the expense component of the building life safety contract. Next slide. Interdepartment, this is our budget, 887,000. This increased 100,000 over our current fiscal year budget. Majority of our component in here is our town general liability and insurance and property insurance is part of this. That increased about 19,000. There's also, there's the increase of 11,000 for the telephone IP address that we currently pay for, that we will be paying, have been paying for, for the Apptitude Fiber. And then 85,000 increase of that 100,000 is due to some upgrades to our IT areas within the department. Again, interdepartment also fosters all our IT needs for the town. So there's some increase, increase needs for new servers, some network upgrades. There's a phone system upgrade. And again, these upgrades are being done because they're needed, but also these are upgrades that will be also transitioned into the new building once we're up and running next year. There was a slight decrease of about 16,000 due to county administration fees and other miscellaneous and supplies in this department. So the budget for this year is 887,000, and 85,000 of that is for some increases into IT support for, for the town. Next slide. Public Works Department, again, the budget went down, went up about 39,000 for the year, at 2.4 million for the department. There was an increase in 10,000 about in, in personnel benefits. This also includes the 2.9% placeholder. UAL went up about 16,000 in this, this department as well as the normal cost for calpers. The operations department increased about 29,000, and a lot of these are contract specific. There was an increase in the MCE contract, and that's about 18,000. Some increase in facility repairs around the park, about 8,000, and that's for the playground upgrades, some plumbing at the restrooms, also for the well maintenance this year at, at the park. Custodial services had increased also as well. We increased that, that, the cleaning of the facilities, and that's about 7,000 increase. And then street sweeping also increased. And again, that contract is also driven by franchise fees. We receive money in franchise fee revenue for street sweeping of the town. And then there's also an increase in tree maintenance to the town, about 5,000 for a total of 90,000 for next fiscal year. And also in this department is also the park event services, and that expense went down 15,000. And again, that's driven by the park event revenue component. Next slide.
You have a question, Robert?
Okay.
Can you, can you explain the tree maintenance substantial increase?
Maybe, it, it increased 5,000. It was, the budget was 85,000 in this current fiscal year. The increase is more for maintenance around the park component is mainly the reason for the increase and just continued maintenance. And then there's some, some also some minor street maintenance too for streets, tree trimming and stuff. So it only increased 5,000 to 90,000.
Robert, this is a, a projection, right? It's not a, it's not a guaranteed expenditure. It's if we need it, we use it, and it's.
Correct.
No, I, I agree, but it was, it was a big increase, and I just didn't know what we were thinking when we, why, why it increased so dramatically. I understand that we're not spending.
Right, right, and maybe Mr. Obadi, I can explain that if you want some more information.
No, okay.
Next department is the police department. So the department increased, total increase in department was of 432,000, I mean, 449,000 to a budget of 8.4 million. 432,000 of that is the salary and benefits component. One of that is that, that's the 2.9% MOU from, with the APOA. The normal cost also increased in the, this, this department. And that is also driven by the increase in the salary component. So it's about 78,000. The UAL component increased 112,000 on the public safety side. So there's, that's the increase of the salaries of 432,000, and 112,000 is the UAL component for this next fiscal year. The operations budget only increased about 17,000. And the reason why is there was a decrease in the equipment component. There's no, that increased about, decreased about 61,000. And that's because the, this year, there is no transfer of, of funding from the, to the equipment replacement fund from the police department. So we, we have, we're gonna make two, three purchases for vehicles. We have ample revenue charges in the equipment replacement fund. So this year, we're not, we're not charging the police department for future equipment charges for this fiscal year. So that went down about 61,000. There's some slight increases in department. Again, it's, it only went up 17,000. There's some purchases that will be coming up and mainly for a, it was written in the staff report, for a server software component that will help the PD track crimes. And, and that will roll out next, toward the end of next fiscal year.
Robert? To the mayor, may I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to understand what you were saying about the vehicle replacement fund. Or in this 2021 budget, you did not put a line item in for the vehicle replacement fund, and that reduced that budget by 61,000?
Yes, ma'am.
And the reason you aren't doing that for the 2021 budget is because the vehicle replacement fund in the 1920 budget was ample enough to fund whatever needs they have for 19 and 20?
Yes, ma'am, yes. There's gonna, there's, there's, there's a purchase for a vehicle, PD truck, and that'll also this upcoming fiscal year. And the projection for that is 80,000. And what we're gonna use on that, the, the department received a donation last year of 80,000, and that was donated into the equipment replacement fund. So that's gonna make that purchase. The other purchase, so it's about 180,000 for two vehicles, two cars, and, and for a PD truck. The truck's about estimated for full equipment and everything, 80,000. The two vehicles to purchase and equip is about 50,000 each, so that's 100,000. There's ample funding of the 100,000 in the equipment replacement fund to make that purchase.
George?
Robert, typically, the equipment replacement fund is sort of used as a depreciation amount for the purchase of future. for the purchase of future equipment needs. And each year, we allocate a certain amount from each department based on their equipment, so that we grow that amount and they are able to purchase vehicles.
That's what I'm concerned about.
So that's what the question is, why are we not doing that this year?
Exactly.
Well, this year, we're not doing it this year because we have, we've built up ample charges for this, these purchases. One was because of the donation, the other is the 100,000. We have ample contribution in there. Doesn't mean that we're going to stop making the contributions in future years. We just felt that this year, because there's ample replacement charges in there.
There's ample funds in the budget right now, so we don't have to add to it. So I have a question, because I think we're going to discuss this about the purchase of the pickup truck and the $80,000 donation. And it's probably not the right time to talk about it, but you brought it up. The donation, was that made just to the police department at large? Or was it made specifically to purchase the pickup truck? And, because I have a conversation around the purchase of the pickup truck.
It was donated for, it was given to the police department specifically for equipment purchases.
Equipment, like?
For vehicles, yeah, correct, vehicles and.
And what other?
And helmets. There was about 25,000 contributed also for helmets, and that was put in the last fiscal year budget.
But that's separate from the?
As well. Correct, correct.
Are we going to discuss that a little bit more later, or about the vehicle purchase?
Of the purchase, yeah, we can discuss it later in the equipment replacement fund, or we can discuss it now. The PD's recommendation is to purchase three vehicles this year, this upcoming fiscal year. One marked car, one unmarked car, and one pickup truck. I believe they're here if they want to discuss that further with the council.
Chief Song.
What would you, what's your guidance on this?
Do you have questions?
Well, I do, specifically about the pickup truck and the use of the pickup truck and the need for a pickup truck. And, you know, I, my initial feelings are that we don't want to do that. We don't want a pickup truck. I don't think that it's necessary. And an $80,000 pickup truck is a very expensive piece of equipment.
Actually, I had a question about that, but it was slightly different. My understanding was that the pickup truck was donated.
No, no, that's what I was asking. That's why I asked the question. Was the donation specifically for the pickup truck? And no, it was not. It went into the equipment fund, and it is being earmarked. It's being, you know, proposed to be used for a purchase of a pickup truck for a supervisor to drive around and for the, put a wench on the front of it in the event that they need to wench up a car out of a ditch or a tree out of it. And personally, I don't, I don't want to support that. I mean, I'm sure there's other discussion that we need to have on it. But it would be one thing if the donation was specifically for the pickup truck, as, you know, identified, and we accepted that donation with that specific request, like when we request, we get donations for the canines, you know, I understand that.
Chief, are you there? He's, he's on the phone, he's unmuted, but I don't think we can hear him.
I'm here, can you hear me now?
There you are, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, so the donation was for $80,000 for equipment. And in reviewing our equipment needs, we did identify a need for a pickup truck as an all hazards vehicle. There's commonly times when we have to pick up evidence, bicycles, others. You mentioned the wench in the event of an earthquake or others. It's going to be important for us to gain access. It isn't designed to be a supervisor vehicle or add to the fleet, but it's just to give us the capabilities in case we need it. Redwood City has a truck for the same purpose. Menlo Park Police has a truck for the same purpose. The police department used to have a truck many years ago, from what I understand. And there's been an identified need to have that capability.
I understand. So it, the staff report says that it would be a supervisor's vehicle?
It has the potential to be. We're still working on the internal, depending on what other fleet vehicles that we obtain. But it wouldn't be a vehicle that's going to be sitting in the parking lot. It would be an active patrol vehicle.
I just, I just can't see a pickup truck cruising our streets on a daily basis.
Councilmember Whitmer's got his hand up as well.
Go ahead, Bill.
He's muted, Bill. Unmute him. You got to unmute yourself, there you go.
Yes, I was, I was here. Could this equipment that the donation is for be equipment that goes into the civic center and the police department?
Yeah, or the APLRs or something, you know, that's equipment.
Yeah, the cameras would be one thing, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of other uses that the $80,000 could be applied to instead of a big, another vehicle that would not be electric. It would be, you know, gas guzzling. And I think that our hazards, the emergency situations that we have are pretty far and few between.
I think that part of the goal of it was the PD is usually the first on the scene.
Understood.
And then we end up calling out MCE or Public Works or other staff to try and clear the roadway, or the fire district to try and clear the roadway. And they're attempting to mitigate that time delay. And you can't use a patrol vehicle to push a tree out of the way or things like that. So that's what they were hoping to use this sort of vehicle for, as well as they've, we do have areas of town that do flood, intersections that flood, and moving vehicles out of those. You can't use a patrol car to go through there because that'll, it'll stall just like a regular vehicle. But a truck would be able to move another vehicle out of the flooded area or intersection. And those are some of the uses that the chief was talking about.
And I understand that we don't have many emergencies, luckily. But in the event that we do have an earthquake or other issue, we do need the capability to haul supplies, to haul people, to do other things. And so what I'm trying to do from an operational standpoint is make sure that we are prepared to meet all needs of our residents when, in fact, it does come up.
Yeah.
I'm not convinced.
Yeah, I think the money needs to be put to the most important need.
I agree.
And so, Robert, here's some music for you.
Oh, you've got the mission, you got the Top Gun?
Yeah, Top Gun, yeah.
I got Top Gun. Maybe after a meeting, we can Top Gun it. Okay, so, what are we going to do about this?
Well, this is a discussion of the budget. We can give direction to the staff, and do others have opinions on this?
I'd like to know what the person who made the contribution is expecting.
Me too, yeah, that's why I asked.
I didn't totally get the answer.
Yeah.
Chief, what's the answer to that?
Well, the answer is it was donated in support of the police department based on our operational needs for equipment. And again, we did an internal assessment based on, we just had other donations that purchased motorcycles.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt, but I'm just more focused on what do we tell her? Is that him or her? I'm sorry, I don't know why I assume it's a her, but the person.
I believe, I believe it's a her, and it pretty much was donated for the police for purchase of equipment that we deemed best for operational need.
So as far as you know, there's no expectation, she had no expectation of exactly what it would be used for? Except equipment as needed?
No, she's relying on our expertise to use her money how we think that we need to.
Thank you.
Question to the chief. Is the, the primary use of this vehicle to be at the station so that if there's a need for this type of vehicle, it's picked up from the station and brought out to a scene and not used as a primary source of patrol?
No, it'll be an active patrol vehicle, fully equipped.
But as far as issue, something, for example, weather conditions permitted, something that you could see a need for, but not really a daily use vehicle, like, for example, the Explorer or another vehicle? Am I wrong in assuming that?
It'll be a daily use vehicle.
So that brings up, if, I'm sorry, I apologize, just to daily use this. So you arrest a subject, you throw them in the back of the pickup? I, I mean, I get the daily use component, but, I mean, you're identifying a need for conditions.
It's a, it's a crew cab pickup with a shield. It's fully designed for a functional police car, just like Menlo Park and just like Redwood City, just like many agencies have. It's a fully functional, fully equipped police vehicle.
So just let me jump in here for a second. What the chief's trying to express as delicately as he can is he and the police department have identified this as one of their operational needs. So if the council wants to say, no, you can't spend the money on that, we don't see it as an operational need, you have the ability to do that as the policy agency to say so. But your police chief is telling you, we need this kind of thing.
Well, George, I understand, and I appreciate the fact that the chief says, let's replace the two Tauruses. I think that that was a good suggestion. And, and maybe, you know, the description of what it was that the pickup was going to be used for when you and I had our one-on-one is now changed to be something different. So I'm just not sure that we're, you know, we're not, I'm not going to say we're inventing justification, but I do think that when money is donated, and it's, we need to look at what it is that is the best use for that. And, you know, obviously, staff should be making a recommendation. And obviously, you as a city manager need to support or whatever. But, you know, we're about to, we're about to borrow 7 million plus, and then there's money on top of that that's still going to be necessary to outfit a building. And if it's necessary to keep that money back to, to, to use for the civic center or for equipping the civic center, I think that you should be, we, we as a group should be considering that. And I think that's where the vice mayor is coming from as well, and I have to, I have to agree with him.
That's exactly your, your policy call, exactly.
Well, are we make, I take it that we're giving direction to you now, and this will ultimately be brought up in the budget?
That's, that's correct. And with respect to this item, you could certainly say we need to wait on the purchase of the pickup truck, as Councilmember Whitmer articulated. We need to wait on the purchase of the pickup truck until we've finished the town center building. We know what space there is in the parking lot because we're already constrained there. There may be other concerns related to the building that we have higher needs for. Let's wait until we do that, and then use this additional grant funds for that type of purchase and priority. You know, if the pickup truck is still there as a need, as a higher need, then we do that.
So let me take a moment to break here because we've been asking questions and making comments, and I just want to see if there's any public comment. I know Bob Toledo had his hand up. I don't know if he still wants to make a comment, but if there's any public comments, I'd like to take those.
Well, I think George put it very well. That's basically what I was going to say. I had one question. I didn't know what the difference in cost between this extremely expensive pickup truck and a regular patrol car is.
There really isn't that much difference. The truck really is not expensive. The baseline, the base model of the truck is not that much more than a base model of a Tahoe, and it is less than the new base model of the Explorer. It's the equipping and the computers and the lights and the other equipment that make it come to a price of about 80,000.
No, I understand, but fully outfitted, you're going to drive this and depreciate it, put miles on it, and make it die relatively soon compared to it sitting there for this emergency use you have. What is the fully outfitted Explorer, or whatever you're driving this week, cost?
The base model is just under 60,000 and fully equipped. It could be another 80 to 90, but you need to understand the vehicle is not going to be sitting in a parking lot. It is a functional part of our patrol cars that are issued out and assigned. It's going to be used daily, and it isn't going to be used up soon. Their relatively lifespan is five years.
I understand that. I was trying to figure out whether we were going to use it as a regular patrol car and it gets depreciated like a regular patrol car, and whether we were talking about 80,000 versus 50. But you're saying that the net cost either way is about the same. So if you're going to replace a regular patrol car with the truck, and it's time to replace a regular control car, patrol car, then I, I don't, I don't think it's really an issue unless maybe Elizabeth doesn't want to see a pickup truck driving around her, down her street, which, which I can identify with. But, but George's point, I think, is the key one, is we got a lot of expenses coming up, and some of them are going to be equipment for the police department and the new town center. Maybe this isn't the time to buy something new. On the other hand, if we need a patrol car, and the truck costs the same, then that's, changes the complexion of the whole thing.
Can I also suggest that maybe a visual for the next time we see this, that maybe the chief can come up with a kind of a visual presentation of what it would depict, what it'd look like, because I think that that is something that we might have, you know. I mean, I support Bob's comment. If it's replacing initial patrol vehicle, that's one thing. But maybe the visual component will help us move forward.
Yeah, we certainly can do that.
I think it's, I think it's, I think that would be just a justification to get it. I think it's something that, you know, in all due respect, you know, Redwood City has one, Menlo Park has one, Atherton's just got to have one, you know, you know, we need one, we need one. We haven't really needed one, I mean, really, really needed one. And the flooding that occurs in our town, it's not like any car that gets stalled out or flooded in an intersection is going to go down the drink. I mean, it's not like Louisiana. So I, I, I do not see the justification for it. I think it's something that is just something that, you know, you kind of want, and you think it'd be cool to have. And so then you kind of figure out all these justifications for it. And it was not presented to us in the context that it's going to replace a patrol car.
Well, let's just confirm that point. It sounds like that is what's being proposed. And is this an additional vehicle, or does this replace an existing vehicle?
It is not in addition to a fleet, it would be replacing an existing vehicle.
Well, that was not what was in the staff report. Or part of the justification. So anyway, maybe we'll get more information as we move forward.
Are we retiring three of the Tauruses then? I didn't think we had three, I thought we only had two.
There's two Tauruses, and we have one Explorer that's currently assigned as a supervisor vehicle that we've been having many problems with it. And one of the reasons is, is it's used every day of the week, day and night, by the sergeants assigned to day shift and night shift.
But wouldn't whatever we replace that with also be used in the same manner?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Well, okay, so you're saying we've got this one vehicle that, I don't, I don't know what the, uh, how old that Explorer is. Is that vehicle finished essentially?
Uh, it's, the, the mileage is between fifteen, sixty thousand. And unfortunately we've been having significant problems with it to the point that we've been pursuing lemon law options with Ford. Uh, we're not sure what's wrong with this particular vehicle, but I do know that part of it, like I said, it's running extensively twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And so the original intent for the truck was to be assigned as a supervisory vehicle. And polling the supervisors, they would prefer to have a Tahoe or an Explorer platform. And so then the truck would be assigned, uh, to officers replacing one of their vehicles. And again, it would be utilized daily. It's not going to sit in the parking lot.
Okay, so just to be clear then, so the, the proposed truck would replace the Taurus's?
Yes.
All right, well then we need to, we need to fix the, the staff report because the staff report said in addition.
It did, yeah.
And the explanation that I'd received on my one-on-one was implied that it was an in addition that would be used by the, by the code compliance officer. They're flying around. And so I'm just saying, you know, it's just, it's just not been clear. So hopefully we can get it cleared up. I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just saying. It's, it's just not been clear and that's what's caused all the discussion.
And, and I'll say from my interpretation of the staff report, I thought it was an additional vehicle that was being donated.
Yeah, I know, love that.
We can make it clear for the next iteration of this item and also bring some visuals back.
So let's do that, let's move on. We may readdress this when it comes back up.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, uh, next slide. So just real quick, certification debt service, um, there's a lease payment, um, principal and interest. Uh, the yearly debt service estimated is one point one million, as we discussed earlier tonight. Um, and when we're looking at the scenarios, it was about eight hundred thousand, eight hundred forty, four thousand. How was the debt service? This, this debt service was based off of our previous assumptions back in March. Um, and again, it was on the public sale of debt service. So, um, this is just a, a budget placeholder holder. I'm going to bring back the budget back in June, um, we'll, we'll update this amount. So again, recommendation is also to use ERAF as a form for the lease payment. Uh, next slide.
If, if ERAF continues to flow to us, it's very iffy.
Correct. Yes, okay, um, some summary in reserves, uh, next slide. Uh, just to show that we're at seventeen point four million in revenues. That includes the one point one ERAF against expenditures of fifteen point three million. Again, it gives us a, uh, two point one million in reserves. And, um, again, we just want to make, mention that the debt service of one point one million will be deducted from that component. Uh, fund balance reserves where, um, our unallocated fund balance is at twenty point four million, projecting at the end of twenty twenty-one. Um, our total reserve requirement is five point eight million. We'll meet that and we have a projected ending fund balance of twenty-six point three million. Um, that just shows the flow through to the unallocated balance of twenty point four seven million. Next slide.
Good.
Any questions on that component before we move into the special revenue internal service fund?
Can you go back to the reserves, just to make sure I understood the three components to it? There we go. So fifteen, can you just go over fifteen, twenty in the capital still, just give me thirty seconds on each of those?
Yes, so, um, the, of the twenty-six point three million ending fund balance, um, we have fifteen percent emergency reserve. That's calculated on the twenty twenty-one expenditures of fifteen point three million.
And that emergency goes to, do we ever define what that emergency goes to or what those reserves go to?
Yes, yeah.
What, what is it?
Uh, that is specifically for emergencies declared by the council. Um, so that's an emergency reserve of fifteen percent that will be set aside, um, specific for emergencies. And, um, there's a twenty percent contingency reserve that's calculated at three million.
And that contingency is.
Just a, uh, operation contingency reserve for the, for the, the, the general fund, that's what that is for.
My understanding is that the fifteen percent is legally required and the twenty percent is a voluntary additional operations reserve that we've decided to, uh, create.
If I, if I may through the mayor, kind of explain a little bit of it.
And Elizabeth, when you're doing that, I'm sorry, the context from my asking is obviously as we look forward to the civic center funding. I just want to understand what's off limits completely and what you're thinking.
Both, both of these, uh, per, uh, council direction and, um, resolution, uh, are off limits because, um, it, the council said the twenty percent, uh, was an amount that ostensibly, if we just kind of ran out of money altogether and we needed, uh, uh, at least two months. I think we can go back and look at the, uh, resolutions. We need at least two months of, uh, contingency to operate, you know, to pay salaries. This may not be enough. I mean, maybe we should look at it again. Uh, and then the emergency reserve, like if, um, I don't know.
Earthquake or something.
Yeah, yeah, like, you know, uh, the big roof came off, yeah, yeah.
There is a specific policy that's articulated within the budget.
Correct.
So for the fifteen percent reserve, it is fifteen percent of the actual annual general fund operating expenses, expenditures, specifically for emergency condition contingencies defined as a state or federal declaration of emergency or a local declaration of emergency as defined by the Atherton Municipal Code. That's the fifteen percent. The twenty percent is the unassigned fund balance policy. Is the general fund unassigned fund balance shall, in no circumstances shall it drop below twenty percent of the actual operating expenses. That's the twenty percent.
And just another point of clarification, we are today in both a federal and state emergency, is that correct?
That's correct. And local.
Not suggesting, just, just let, just.
But we're still not using any of that for any of those contingencies, correct?
And, and just to add, if you recall, when we were discussing the town center and the financing of the town center, we considered using or going into, not using all of, but going into the operational reserve, this twenty percent. But then in the course of, uh, considering the COPs, uh, we were advised that, that we should not do that because the banks want to see that substantial reserve. And in fact, the consultants got comments from the banks that were different than most cities because of our substantial reserves. So they really liked to see the amount of reserve that we have. But we had considered going into that operational reserve and legally we could do that if we chose to. And Bill has his hand up.
Yeah, so, um, spending, since we're in an emergency, spending some of that reserve or considering that, might be important from the standpoint of, you know, Jackie Speer today on the call said that there's like three hundred and thirty billion dollars that in the next round of fun, potential funding, that would be dedicated towards reimbursing, uh, small cities, a small city being, uh, thirty thousand or less. Uh, and then there's an amount of, of substantially higher than that going to the larger cities, um, that they're anticipating hopefully getting approval on in the next couple of weeks. And, and we should probably do whatever we can to investigate what are the, what are the, um, requirements for actually tapping into that. And it may be in that case, we may need to have spent some of the reserve to get it replenished. So I just offer that as, as something that we, uh, really should look into. And it may be tied to how much money you've spent so far. Whether or not it came out of that reserve or not, I don't know. She didn't get into detail, but it's something that we should make sure that we're on board to go get our hand up first.
We are, and just for the council's, uh, any money we expend related to or in any way connected to, uh, COVID nineteen situations, Robert is coding specifically, uh, for use in a funding request to the state OES and FEMA.
Very good.
Correct.
Very good.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're already registered, um, with FEMA, with CalOES. Um, so, um, again, we, we identified those expenditures, um, and we're in communication with CalOES, um, regarding, um, and, and they're making calls too, if we need additional, uh, uh, emergency funds, if we need it up rampant, um, need for, for funds. So, um, that's been communicated, so we, we, we're in constant communication regarding that.
What would be helpful to me at least would be if, when you come back and we're talking about, um, a private placement or, or COP or, and we have a timeline and the timeline shows when we need to begin to draw on different funds. I, I don't know what interplay there might be if we had flexibility to go into some of these reserves for a short period of time, if that'd be helpful or not. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll present that, um, when we have our discussion next month, uh, regarding the, uh, cash flow analysis. Definitely be able to show that.
Okay, Bob Toledo?
He's still muted.
Let me take, let me take some public comment since we're into discussion on this and I haven't, and we just switched from one topic to another. And I've got two hands up. So Bob, uh, you are.
He's unmuted now.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just real quickly, the, the, uh, we sign this, uh, letter of intent or term sheet tomorrow. They'll review some financials as a part of their process and they already know what our reserves are. And, um, I, I think dipping into the reserves might affect, or any intent to dip into the reserves might affect, the private placement going forward as well as other issues. So I'm not sure we should plan on, make any plans that would, uh, relate to that.
I would agree with that.
Good point.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, and just to echo that sentiment, sentiment, we do have a, a fund balance policy that, that does illustrate the fifteen percent, twenty percent set aside. And that was also communicated to, um, the bank when we submitted our, our credit package to them. So, um, but we, we can provide some analysis to show that, um, in our cash flow next month.
All right. Greg?
Did, did you show a deficit? Are you going to have a deficit at the end of your fiscal year?
No.
What about the loss of revenues that you talked about earlier on the building department and the, and you, that didn't impact you enough to cause you to go into a deficit?
That's correct.
Correct.
Is there any other public comment on this matter?
I have no other notes, sir.
Okay.
We're going to move.
Just as a point of clarity, I, I, I think it's a perfectly valid conversation to talk about the reserves. It, it, and it doesn't change anything. This is just a conversation. We haven't made a policy change and, um, we have stated to the potential lenders here what our reserve policy is, which exists and will continue. And, uh, they're processing that and, uh,
So they can.
And it looks good, so. Go ahead, Robert.
Thank you, mayor. Um, okay, uh, now we're going to move into the special revenue internal service fund component, um, next, this next staff report. Again, special revenues, they're accounted for revenues derived from specific sources. Uh, they're funds that are required by law administrative regulations to be accounted separately. Um, some of our special revenue funds are the library fund, um, the special parcel tax, which is on this capital improvement fund side. Uh, we also have internal service funds, which is the equipment replacement fund, workers' compensation fund, liability fund, um, and employee benefits fund. Uh, the capital improvement is a five-year program that proposes, um, projects, analyzes, improvements for town infrastructure that will, um, be later after this, um, discussion. Um, we'll get into the CIP, next slide. So just for, uh, purposes of this special fund of library, uh, the revenue to expenditures, this is just to show, um, basically in the twenty twenty-one budget, uh, we showing, uh, one point five million in revenues coming in, but expenditures of sixteen point one million, um, going out. And this is just to show that the library scheduled portion of the construction of the civic center is this includes the sixteen point one million. And then also within that is basic levels of operation. So, uh, that sixteen point one, one million, fourteen point two percent, two million is the actual construction, uh, which also includes one million, um, three hundred thousand for FFNE, three hundred thousand for consulting, and then twelve point nine million in construction, as well as in, uh, one point eight million in contingency. So that's just put in there in the budget and of that sixteen point one million, um, for, uh, illustrative and budget purposes. Next slide. As of six thirty two thousand nineteen, the funds held by the town was three point three million. Uh, and of library donor funds and the JPA, uh, held nineteen, nine point eight million. So our estimated available funding is about twelve point three million. This is inclusive of the fund balance and also our eighteen nineteen revenue, which we should receive, um, this next, um, next couple of months. And this go around, um, receiving that money and then also the estimated donor revenues of one point four, five million as well.
And we do anticipate, Robert, receiving in advance from the library, from the county, uh, to mitigate the difference between the expenditure to complete the library versus the amount of available funding.
Correct. And.
And just to be clear, excuse me, and just to be clear, George, that would be based on future donor, excess donor fund, uh, revenues, correct?
That's correct.
It'll be paid back from excess donor fund, right?
Yes.
Well, the same difference.
Yeah.
Right, the advance of that money, correct?
Okay.
Um, next, next slide. Um, just all the other restricted funds, just to quickly highlight tennis fund, um, we have that. Uh, we're, we're showing, um, fifty-two thousand in expenditures against forty-seven thousand in, um, revenue. Um, there's a positive fund balance in the tennis fund of about two hundred thousand, uh, almost two hundred thousand. Cops fund, we use it for annual frontline law enforcement. That's about a hundred thousand dollars that goes to, um, police personnel. Um, cost, equipment replacement fund, uh, we're expecting, um, twenty forty thousand in expenditures. Uh, of that includes the, it's not two PD vehicles, it's three. Um, and then sixty, um, thousand for flock cameras and, uh, and MREs. So it's about fifty thousand for flock cameras, ten thousand for MREs in this fund. Workers' compensation fund, uh, charges, yes, that'll be adjusted and it'll be brought, brought back, um, again, at our June study session, um, for council review. Uh, workers' compensation fund, we're expecting four hundred and twenty thousand in, um, charges from department to this fund. Um, our assessment is a hundred twenty-five thousand, uh, to the JPA in this upcoming fiscal year budget. Uh, general liability, liability fund, um, tracks our liability claims and property losses. Claims to this department, um, is, uh, expense of two hundred ninety-eight thousand. That includes our liability employment practice, coverage of a hundred ninety-eight thousand for the year. And also we have a SIR, uh, expense of a hundred thousand. So that comes out to about four claims, um, are, um, it's twenty-five thousand per claim. Employee benefits fund, usually this fund is, um, handles the retiree healthcare pay-as-you-go, um, charges and also the OPEB arc allocation of one hundred forty-six thousand for this upcoming fiscal year, twenty twenty-one. They all have positive balances and, um, our internal charges to the general fund, um, come into this, these, uh, They all have positive balances and, um, our internal charges to the general fund, um, come into this, these, uh, internal service fund.
You have a question, Robert?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I didn't hear that. Yes.
Bill?
Yeah, uh, so Robert, um, hopefully you can hear me. Let me make sure my lines, okay, it's on. Two questions. One is on the, on the flock cameras being part of the equipment replacement fund. Since we don't own any, we're not replacing any. So is that the right categorization of that? And then secondly, the way it's been described is that, and maybe, correct me, or maybe I misunderstood, but you know, we're paying a certain amount of money every year to have those cameras here. So if we stop paying, I assume that Flock will come and pick up their cameras. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not really, we're renting them, we're not, it's not capital.
Yeah, probably should go into the operational budget.
Sweet, operation, correct, we can, we can move that.
Yeah, and then so, and then to follow on with my technology upgrade requirements, that we just tell them if they got a better camera, we just say, take these old ones and give us the new ones. It's the same price.
Yeah, good luck with that, Bill.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, but, but okay, but there, but it's been miscategorized here, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's a good point.
No, we, we'll make those, those changes. True.
We're going over a long time here, let's go.
Yeah, sorry, uh, I'm done.
I think you're going to skip on us, Robert.
Robert, did you just say that?
Hey, wait a minute.
So we're not going over the CIP stuff that you sent us to read, is that right?
Well, that, that is, that is my other counterpart, Robert O., is going to present that.
Well, thank you, uh, thank, thank you, members, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So before we move into the CIP, I don't know if you wanted to ask, Robert, uh, any questions on the, um,
Sorry, Robert.
On the special funds.
Okay, I love that, thank you.
Not at this hour, I don't want to ask Robert any questions whatsoever.
Okay.
Well. As we went along.
Robert, oh, I certainly appreciate you being there.
I'm going to say that, uh, I'm going to say that Robert did a masterful job with his slide presentation. I do not have one for you. And so in the interest of time, I will make things, uh, a little brief in terms of the presentation. We'll ask for some guidance from the council in some, uh, special topic areas and then answer any questions that you might have on the draft CIP. So, um, in the document that's been presented, there's, uh, 17 projects that are, um, looking to be funded, predominantly in three major categories, streets and transportation being one, drainage being number two, and the third being, uh, buildings, parks and facilities. Want to highlight, uh, a couple of items on the funding sources. You know already that the, uh, special parcel tax has been, has expired. We've kind of been stringing the available funding along and, uh, the primary area that we're putting those funds in, uh, are to the street and transportation program for street maintenance. We have a new funding source that we have added this year and that's the Measure W. So thank you for, um, approving the agreement with the county to get a, uh, share of the sales tax revenues. Uh, I think that, uh, I think we could get 10% that's distributed back to the jurisdictions based on, um, street miles and population. The initial estimate per the, uh, county was approximately $150,000 per year. With the situation that we're in now, we're expecting revenues from anything that's sales tax related. So that's the Measure W as well as Measure A, as well as gas tax related to be reduced a bit. Partially due, I mean, I say really due to people staying home, not driving as much and not spending as much out in the stores and restaurants, et cetera, which generate those, uh, sales tax dollars. So that's reflected in the budget. We've reduced some of the revenue expectations as well as the expenditures just to alleviate some of that uncertainty. The major projects that are enlisted in the CIP, uh, our biggest expenditure is, you know, is the town center project that's followed by the library, uh, that being 16.6 million dollars for the town center and 14.3 million dollars for the library. We've, um, outlined 2.4 million dollars for drainage, for the drainage improvement program. Um, and that's one of the key areas that we will be asking for, uh, some feedback from the council and I'll talk about that in a little bit. And then, um, about $880,000 this year for, um, roadway maintenance. And so that's a slight uptick from, from the current year predominantly due to the increase in the, um, the availability of the Measure W funds. So the areas for feedback are really related to bike and pedestrian master plan improvements. We have not yet identified a priority project, but we've identified, we've, uh, put in, uh, approximately $200,000 to help with some minor improvements as well as to have local match money and, uh, grant, uh, money available to help us, uh, put together grant applications. And as was alluded to earlier, there's a hope that there might be some infrastructure money that comes down the pipe. And so this would, this money would be available to help us, uh, try and secure some of those funds as they become available. We've, uh, just received a request from CCAG, uh, to look at our projects that might be, uh, potentially shovel-ready or close there too, so that when, uh, funding becomes available, they can advocate for the, the projects in the county. Uh, the next feedback area is related to the stormwater capture project. The project is, uh, currently still under development. We're waiting for the DA to be executed and the council to approve the DA and to allow us to move forward with that project. Currently it is, uh, to a degree on hold, waiting for feedback from Menlo College and Menlo School. And we're hoping to, um, resume forward momentum once we get that feedback from them. And then the last area of feedback is related to the Bayfront Canal Project. It's listed in the staff report at 1.3 million dollars for the coming fiscal year. And that is, um, going to depend on council's direction whether or not, um, you'd like to enter into an agreement with the county for participate, for the, for participating in the construction phase. There is a potential for the county to provide that, uh, to provide upfront funding and a loan over a course of approximately 10 years to cover the contribution that would be allocated to the town of about 1.3 million dollars. And so there's been a subcommittee meeting on that topic and, uh, either I can answer questions or the committee can provide feedback. Sorry for speeding through.
Do we have any questions?
Karen's going to say motion to adjourn.
I was thinking that, but, uh, this, this, but I was just going to thank Robert for his, uh,
Yeah.
very detailed and.
And you let him fly under the radar, unlike Maverick.
Yeah, Mr. Avadi, you did a great job.
Yeah.
He's viper, he's viper.
I want to know who the iceman is, who's the iceman?
Robert Tu should be in the spaceship, he would fly at best.
So this, this is.
I'm, I'm going to say that Maverick has aged better than the iceman.
Well, because he's no longer with us, right?
Oh, Maverick with the rocket behind him has aged extremely well.
I think George is, 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 uh, what was it, Merlin? He opted out, by the way.
Are we ready, are we ready?
Put it in a positive light, I'd say this issue is now before us and if there's any questions, please think about them and we'll bring them up.
Here we go.
Okay, I've got a motion to adjourn in a second. Though the item that we haven't addressed in the subcommittee reports, but George and I agreed that we could move that, uh, to the next plane.
Okay, all right, I'm leaving the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, guys, see you later.
Bye, y'all.